Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to Otero County, New Mexico, regular meeting agenda on August 12th, 2021. At this time, could I give a roll call, please?
Commissioner Madley?
Here.
Commissioner Griffin?
Here.
Commissioner Markort?
Here.
At this time, we're gonna have an invocation led by Commissioner Griffin. And at the end of the invocation, I would ask you to please stand for a minute, for a moment of silence for a past Commissioner that passed away about a week and a half ago.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Let us pray. Father, we thank you, God, for this morning, Lord, as we do every morning, God, that you give us. And, Lord, we just pray, God, that you watch over this meeting this morning, Lord, as we go through this agenda. Father, give us eyes to see the things that we need to decide on and in a heart, Father, to decide on those things in a way that honors and pleases you, God. Father, may we have a love for one another, God, and as your word teaches us to, love our enemies, Lord God, and love those that persecute us. Father, may you teach us to do that, God, as we live in such a politically divided world. Father, may we just have a heart not for politics, Lord God, but just to honor you, God, and to serve your kingdom, Lord. We thank you, Father, in Jesus' name.
Moment of thanks, please. Thank you. Will you follow me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
The Commissioner that passed away, I don't know if any of you know it or not, but it was Doug Moore. He was passed two Commissioners ago, three Commissioners ago.
Hi.
Janet, Tommy, Duke. So, anyway, he was a very big part of Otero County, and he will be missed.
And if I can just remember Doug as well, I just found out this morning, I didn't know that he had passed, but Doug was one of, in my opinion, one of the greatest Commissioners that Otero County ever had. He had a huge presence. He was strong in his convictions. And he stood up for people's rights, for their individual rights. And I think that by remembering Doug's legacy, it can give us Commissioners strength today to do the same and try to follow the example that Doug led. So, he was a great man.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. At this time, is there anybody representing the Sheriff's Department? There he is.
Coming in hot.
How are you all today?
Good. How are you, David?
I'm doing well. David Black, Otero County Sheriff. Sorry, hang out in the back for a minute. For July 2021, Otero County Sheriff's Office responded to 2,525 calls for service, generated 151 investigative reports, issued 104 traffic citations, conducted 40 traffic crash investigations, and all that work at 59 arrests. In our narcotics division, they did three search warrants, they had six arrests, generated 24 case reports. They took four checkpoint cases, Border Patrol checkpoint cases. And they had three jail possession cases that they worked last month. They seized 169 grams of meth, 10 grams of heroin, 2 pounds of marijuana. And this one is kind of the one that's been bothering me. It's on the increase, 1,086 grams of fentanyl.
Wow.
Total of $39,534 worth of illegal drugs. Yeah, special events for July. We attended the Muscularo Fourth of July Parade, Cloudcroft Parade, El Magordo Parade. And we also assisted in traffic control down in the Chaparral area for that fireworks show down there. On the 29th of July, attended a meeting with the Border Patrol Sector Chief, Chief Chavis in El Paso. She had a meeting with all border sheriffs of New Mexico, and we had a couple from Texas show up. That basically, she just gave us kind of an update on what they're seeing, what they're doing, what they're dealing with. And we're just starting to see more and more here. I think last month, we also had 30 people that we dealt with. I don't know if you heard about the one, the U-Haul trailer that had illegal aliens in the back, and it got stopped between here and Carizoso. Found that one of the occupants of that vehicle was deceased. So, it turned into a long ordeal shortly after that. We had 15 more, and then two more in another section. So, they're doing walkarounds. They're dropping them off between here and Cruzus, and they're walking around the checkpoint, and somebody's picking them up on this side. Our training for July, again, we were pretty much done with all our biennium or annual training, and stuff that we're required to get every year. I always hated to try to have everybody try to do this in November and December, trying to get it crammed in by the end of the year. So, we are done with it now. So, I mean, they can concentrate on holidays, family, stuff like that. We did complete a training on our TRACS program. Again, TRACS is our automated traffic crash documentation. Makes it nice now that we can do a accident report. When we complete it, we send it supervisor, have it okayed by a supervisor. It goes to a records clerk who does what she has to do, and then it gets sent electronically to Santa Fe. It's also available on the Internet now. So, if somebody needs a copy of an accident report, they don't have to come to the office. They can go on the Internet, and they pay the fee and print it out there. This is something I have been working on the past few months really, really hard. As it sits right now, our dispatch center, we have a full-time and a part-time position open. We are accepting applications for those positions right now. We have hired two courthouse court security transport positions. They started on Tuesday. They're currently in training at the office right now. When we get them done with their training, you know, they'll start helping us out at the courthouse and transports, and that division will be fully staffed now. So, that'll help a bunch. We had two candidates in the background phase for community services officer. We hired one, started yesterday. Where's Tom at? Sorry, Tom. The other decided this job was not for him, so we are still accepting applications for one community services officer. In our deputies' positions, we have two deputies that have completed their FTO program. They are waiting to attend a waiver course in September. On July 17th, we held physical fitness testing. We had five applicants show up. Normally, it's usually 20 or 30, but five is all we had this time. Out of that, we have two that are in the background phase. We're fixing to get them picked up and get them to work. So, with all of that being said, one deputy position is open, full-time dispatch, part-time dispatch, and one CSO position. So, right now, we're looking pretty good. But again, my goal is by the end of the year, have us fully staffed. And we're working on moving some people around and getting some investigators in investigative positions. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
I have one. David, you said there was an increase in that one type of drug. How much did it increase from last month?
Oh, let me see if I can. Let's go back to February. They seized 10 pills. March, 80 grams. April, 40.8 grams. June, 27.5 grams. July, 1,086 grams. And it's not just us. This is, you know, our high in narcotics people, they keep track of all this. It's coming in, a lot of it's stopping here, but the majority of it, it's going north, and it's going all over the nation right now.
And I think that's really the shift that the cartel's making right now, you know? I mean, before marijuana was legal, then that was their cash crop. But now that recreational marijuana is gonna be legal, this fentanyl, I think that they're really gonna start fighting. It's as lethal as anything out there.
You get over in the Tucson area, we had a report, one of the agents come over to our meeting. You know, and they used to have guys going across the border in backpacks marijuana and all this stuff. They're not doing that anymore. It's all fentanyl. This is where their money is now.
I saw on TV the other day where, I think he was a deputy, overdosed on fentanyl, just standing by the car that it was in. I mean, that's how deadly it is.
Yeah, he actually handled it, not knowing what it was.
Had to give him some Narcan to get him to come back.
Yeah, they had to Narcan and bring him back, just from touching it.
When you were with the Sector Chief of the Border Patrol, did she give you any hope whatsoever that maybe this trend is gonna stop, and they're gonna finally do something at our border?
Absolutely none.
Or we're just in for more?
Yeah, absolutely none. She's telling us the only good thing about what they're kind of doing right now is that Title 42. You know, they're able to, certain people that come across, they're able to turn them around and send them right back. But, you know, if you look at family units, we're not getting family units here. They're all going over into Texas because they're putting their family units, they're letting them in. So, here, they chip them back.
With the Governor's current focus on COVID and the mandates and all the concern that they're showing towards coronavirus, do you ever hear anything from the state or other political figures where they're concerned about all the COVID cases that are coming across the border with the illegals that are coming across? I mean, do they ever say anything about the threat from COVID that we're facing right now with an unsecured border?
We're not hearing that from any government officials. We're hearing that from boots on the ground, the ones that are getting sick from these people coming across and stuff. So, we get daily updates. I got two different sources that send us intel briefs every day, just kind of letting us know what's going on. And that's what we're starting to see now is a rise in the COVID cases in the housing facilities, and then also with law enforcement, Border Patrol, and stuff that are, you know, manning these facilities.
And when these migrants come across the border, David, and they're sick, visibly sick, or if they've been tested and they're known to have COVID, is there anything in place to keep these people in containment or quarantine? Or are they letting these people go even though they're sick? Are they still releasing them into the United States?
Depends on the region that they're in. If you're down in the Rio Grande Valley and stuff like that, they have some housing facilities where they basically, you know, sequester them, put them in that facility. Some regions don't have those facilities, and a lot of them are.
Including New Mexico. So, you know, I mean, I don't know. It's a disgrace, I believe. I believe that it's a disgrace on the Governor's position as she is, as they make such a political stand as far as protecting us and our children, but yet with the migrants that are coming across, they go unvetted, unchecked. I mean, when you cross cattle, you gotta dip them and quarantine them, you know? But yet, with this influx of migrants, it just makes no sense to me, and it puts communities at risk. And it's too bad it's not reported on a little bit more.
Yeah, that's true.
Any else?
That's all.
Thank you, Dave.
Just one other thing. The lady we talked about a couple weeks ago.
In Dog Canyon?
Yes. We've actually made several visits to those properties out there. I think we've got a handle on things. Let's just say, one of the parties received an eviction notice and is leaving with their animals. So, we've got several that we cited into court. And we're waiting on hearings in magistrate court on, you know, the animals at large and stuff like that. But with the eviction notice, one of the parties is leaving, and I think we won't have any of those problems down there again, so.
There was one gentleman, one of the neighbors came in, and he talked to Sylvia.
Yeah, I talked to Monica.
And he was saying that there was more of the story than what she's saying. But I'm sure you've talked to him. It's one of the key players.
Right. That's why I was hearing half the story. That's why we made a trip down there, and we visited with not only the two involved, but other neighbors in the area, and pretty much got the whole story. So, now we know what's going on, and we'll deal with it. It's gonna be taken care of.
Right. Along those lines, it just reminded me as well, I got a call from a constituent in Walloose the other day. The neighbor is very visibly, either got mental issues or probably a lot of drugs involved. But it was, I drove out there, and I drove by the place, and it was unbelievable the conditions that these people were living in. But the saddest part about it is they have children that are living in those same conditions that are subjected to it as well. And, yeah, I mean, you know, I have constituents call me, and they're just, they're completely desperate. You know, they see this happening every day with these people that are completely strung out, that are living right next to them. And there's just, I say, I'm gonna do what I can do. But as a fiscal agent of the county, I don't, I mean, maybe pass some ordinances or some... But I just don't know as far as the Sheriff's Department goes. If you guys see these kind of places, and there's children that are living in those conditions, you know, I mean, what can you do? What can you do?
A lot of times, we just go out and do, you know, a site visit and look at the conditions. If there's conditions that we feel are, you know, they need some help, they need, you know, whether it be CYFD, you know, whatever, whoever we need, we've got a lot of resources that we can utilize. We just have to know about it. And I've learned that usually if I talk with them over the phone or something like that, that it doesn't take care of anything. I will pay them a visit. I'll put eyes on, so I know exactly what's going on.
Sure.
And then we can recommend, you know, get other agencies and stuff involved, you know, whether it be state, you know, whatever we need, just to see if we can give them some help.
Yeah. You know, when it's an individual living like that by himself, apart from the community, then to each their own. But whenever you're subjecting children or you're living next to somebody else that's trying to live a quiet, peaceful life, and these people are out there strung out, tweaking and disruptive, then I think that, yeah, that's where we ought to be able to step in somehow.
Yeah.
And I know that, I know there's a lot of obstacles that ought to come.
There are, all the time.
We appreciate you, David.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the emergency services.
Go to Matt.
Hey, Matt.
Fire Commissioners.
Matt Clark, Emergency Services. For the month of July, the fire departments responded to 150 calls. 137 of them were EMS, harassed with weather and some hazardous conditions. But the big one was EMS because we are visiting with the, getting called out for the illegals crossing as well. So, we're seeing an uptick as well. Opened up 32 code violations, completed 42 follow-ups, closed 19 of those cases, and did two inspections or investigations on fires. At the slash pit, from April to August 1st, 541 loads. We had 96 loads just last month, and people have pulled out about six loads of chip wood or other wood that they want. For the Three Rivers Fire, the Forest Service sent me an email. Forest Service can confirm the Three Rivers Fire was human-caused. There's an ongoing investigation underway to identify the parties or individuals responsible. Releasing additional information at this time could jeopardize the ongoing investigation. However, we thank the public and the Commission for their support of law enforcement and their understanding while we try to bring justice to all those negatively impacted by the fire. We hope to be able to release more information at a later date.
So, do they have any, they don't, they didn't give any more than that? They don't have any possible suspects or possible leads, or that's all you got from them?
That is what I got from the Forest Service.
Then how long's it been since that fire? I mean...
Well, that was in May.
Yeah. You know, I mean...
Investigations take time.
And sometimes, community involvement inside an investigation is very productive as well, you know? I mean, if they're not getting anywhere, and they're just on cold trails, then sometimes they can get the community involved, or maybe offer a reward, or, you know? I mean, has anybody seen anything? Or that's usually typically, whenever you have an investigation, and they're not, they don't break it down within the first 48 hours, then they start saying, well, if anybody saw a white pickup truck or a different, you know? I mean, I don't know. But I just want the Forest Service to know that we're not gonna forget about this, and we're gonna press them, and we want to know who started it. Because sometimes, the more an investigation goes on, sometimes that just leaves the questions. If they're, are they trying to cover something up? Are they trying to hide something, you know? Do they know who did it? And somebody inside trying to protect somebody, you know? Those are all the questions that start flowing into people's heads whenever you don't have a clear and transparent investigation going. So, you know, I hope that the Forest Service is listening, and I hope that they know that next time during, next month at our county commission meeting, we're gonna be asking these questions again, and we're gonna want some more details on how far along in the investigation they are, and, you know, how much hope they have in it. I mean, we could sure enough get community involvement going to make sure we find out who started this fire, because that person's still out there right now, you know? And we still have a forest up here that is very, very vulnerable right now. And if we have an arsonist living in our communities, and he wants to go start another fire, the next one might be a lot more destructive, you know? So, we need to catch this guy. They need to call in whatever resources they need to call in and get this guy caught, if it was man-made, which we know it was. So, appreciate you, Matt.
We did a community cleanup in Iron Gate. They were hit pretty hard with flooding. So, they're picking up slash up there and taking it into our slash pit. And then we did the community cleanup down at Chaparral after the Fourth of July. We're having meetings with Doniana County and the community of Chaparral for whatever direction Chaparral is moving towards.
That's a mystery right now.
Have you seen an uptick in calls you get for overdose deaths? Have you been involved in that?
We're seeing not as many in the county, but in the city, a lot more.
Do you have any idea if they're fentanyl-related, or do you have that information?
I don't have that information. I can ask and see if we can get it.
See if you can get that.
Matt, speaking of Chaparral, the meetings, and then after we visited with the Doniana Fire Chief, have you contacted him or been in touch with him since that meeting?
I have not had the opportunity to. I hope to meet with him on, tomorrow.
Okay. And then one other question. I had turned in another episode on Canyon Place to Bill. Do you know anything about that, if he's, I haven't heard back from him?
I don't. I will ask him what's going on with that.
It's for me.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Just wanted you to know, we appreciate you guys so much, you know? I mean, a lot of times, the first responders are overlooked, but you guys being the first on the scene, tons of respect, and we appreciate you guys so much. So, just wanted you to know that.
No, thank you. And I guess one last thing that I would like to mention. We had a cattle truck that rolled over last Sunday. And the ranchers of the community did a phenomenal job. I think we only made one phone call, and we had six different ranchers with trailers helping to unload the cattle. So, big shout out to them.
Thank you, Matt.
Great group.
Road Department.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hey, Tom.
Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department. First off, y'all have a copy of the proof for the sign for the Riada Bridge.
Yeah, it looks great. I think. Looks good.
If y'all are happy with that, we'll get it.
That's the bridge we just finished completing out on Riada Road. I'm sorry. But, yeah, the Commission Board, we all agreed to honor the memory of Lindsey Suzanne Nicole Walker and Susan Lynn Walker, whose names are both on this sign. They died at that low-water crossing on August 14th, 1986. So, by the county taking the action in building this bridge, by God's grace, we won't have any more of these out there, so.
So, if y'all are happy with that, I'll get the signed company to make up the set of them. Okay, good deal. We finished chip sealing on Riada right before the opening of the bridge. Also, Assembly Road up in Sacramento's and Hay Canyon in the same area, which finished off the chip seal season for this year, just in time for monsoon season to take full hold. We've pretty much been running nonstop. Got two blades up on the hill in the Cloudcroft area. Matter of fact, yesterday, Dale finished up one subdivision, and as he was coming out, the mud was chasing him out because it got hit again. So, yeah. Unfortunately, that's pretty much what we've been doing for the last month, other than that little bit of chip seal. Any other questions?
When I talked to Lonnie, nothing down on the Mesa, all that area is still...
Dale Leath, I've actually posted a couple pictures on the road shop page. He was in there one day on the lower end, just below Dixie, and it washed out a 10-foot washout along the road that he filled in one day, and then he went back to get his blade the next day. And it was a 7-foot washout where he had just fixed. So, yeah, it's been a nonstop battle for the last few weeks.
That's all I have. Yep, I don't have anything. Thank you, Tom. Detention Center.
Hi, Carolyn.
Good morning.
Good morning. We missed you last month.
So, today's population is 190. I have, in the facility, I have 155. I put the wrong list, but I have 30 females and about 125 males. Seven at the Otero Prison, 23 at Huntsville County, five at the Department of Corrections. No juveniles. For the month of July, we hired three full-time detention officers and one part-time. We are scheduled for tests and interviews next Thursday. We do have two applicants. If we get any applications between now and then, they'll be included in. If we get any applications between now and then, they'll be included in those for that test and interview date. We'll begin our scheduled pastor visits next Monday, where pastors will be able to come in and visit with them through the visitation, through glass. They can schedule that, and they can see up to three inmates per pastor. Yesterday, we had a meeting with White Sands, our weekly meeting with them, and we are on target with laundry, so hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have that back, hopefully by the twenty-seventh. That's going good with our local vendor that's doing all our laundry, with the exception of our whites, that, that we, the staff, are doing. So that's working good. We got in the kitchen units. We got the main unit in on mu, this past Monday, and then we got the freezer and fridge on Tuesday. It's been a little bit, we've been overcoming some obstacles. The generators we were hoping to get, that the county had, were not working. For some reason, they were working in the past, and then they started to, they didn't work when we needed them. We ended up having to rent a generator from Sunbelt. The unit, when it arrived, was not clean, so they had, we had, I took pictures, we called our Trinity, the, the kitchen vendor that we have, and explained, hey, this is not going to work, they're going to need to get somebody out here. We had people, they made calls, and they got some people out there to clean those, that unit. The freezer went out on Saturday. The freezer unit went out, so they had to call someone in to come in and get it fixed. They ordered the part, the part didn't come in, and they didn't come in till Tuesday evening they were there, working on the freezer. The fridge, the small fridge that's in the unit, wasn't working, so they were going to work on that. So it's just been one thing after another, after another. So hopefully, we're, we're getting through those obstacles and we're moving forward. So we have, July twenty-sixth, we had the Department of Health come in, again, to give the second dose of COVID test vaccine, and we had twenty-two inmates that participated and one staff. They're expected to return again this month, on the twenty-third, I believe, of this, it's on a Monday, they'll be coming back in and they'll start again. Anybody's interested, or if their second dose is to be given, they'll start that. So that's continuing. That'll be on a, probably a monthly basis from here on out. They began on this past Tuesday with working on the lines in the kitchen to replare, repair those plumbing lines that we have that need to be done before White Sands gets in there and begins the actual re, remodeling of the kitchen. So they're working on that. They were supposed to start Monday, but then again, we had some issues again with the kitchen, so we couldn't move things out, and, you know, trying to move all the heavy equipment out as well, you know? So everything's been a little bit of a, an obstacle for us, so, but we're getting through it. Contraband. We had, for the month of July, we had four through the mail, attempted to sneak in. We had one weapon found during processing, and we found three drugs found during processing. So when they were bringing them in, the agencies, this is when we discovered these things. So. I don't have anything else.
I have two things.
Okay.
First, with the, with the vaccine and with the inmates receiving it, is there any, those that choose not to get the vaccine, are they treated any differently than those that do get the vaccine as far as movement in the jail or, or, you know, how they're handled? Is there any...
No.
Okay.
No, no, we have to tr, we treat them the same.
As long as we, we hold that line there, because I know that with these mandates through the state, they're trying to force, force a lot of people to get the vaccine.
Right.
And, and we don't want to do that to our inmates. They're the most vulnerable of all people if they're locked up.
Right.
And we don't want to be isolating them, and I, and my, my position is that we don't want to isolate them or treat them any differently than somebody that has had the vaccine. If people, if inmates have had the vaccine, then they should be well-protected themselves, and they should not worry about somebody that chooses not to get the vaccine.
Right.
If they choose not to get the vaccine, the only thing they will be doing is putting their own selves at risk if, if the vaccine works and COVID's serious. Another thing on COVID, are you still testing the same, Carolyn? Are all the inmates that come into the facilities still being tested for COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless they don't, if they do not want to, then we have to...
Quarantine.
Quarantine.
Okay. I know what that's like. But what's your num, what are your numbers doing? Are you seeing an uptick in cases in, in the jail, or...
We have no cases.
You have no cases right now?
We have no cases. So, yes.
You know, I would, I would, I, I'm glad that you're still testing...
Yes.
...the inmates that come in, and the reason why is because I believe that's really the way we can really judge on what this pandemic is doing, because right now, we're seeing what, what the media and the government is calling the surge in cases, you know? And they're, they're really sensationalizing this surge in cases, but I believe the surge is coming from the testing. We're testing again. We're setting up testing sites, and the more people that are tested in the general populace, the more cases that they're going to find. But I believe, like, our detention center will be a, will be a good, a good, solid indicator, because if we start, if everybody's being tested that comes in and we're staying, staying flat, then that's going to mean that maybe there's not this big surge in cases outside. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I mean, so, keep us, keep us in the loop on that. If you do see a surge and if, with, with your people that are coming into your jail, if all of a sudden there's an uptick in positives, then, then maybe we will know that, you know, that would be a good indicator of, of maybe it is on the rise, so.
Okay. So just so that you know, when people come in, it's not only inmates that are, are tested. We test staff as well. So if we have no cases, we usually test on a monthly basis. So let's say Monday, they may test the whole shift that's there. The following week, they may test another shift, and so on and so forth. If we get a positive, if we were to get a positive, then at that point, we go to a hundred percent, a hundred percent testing. That means every week, everybody's tested. That means not only staff, that means our medical staff, our kitchen staff, and anyone that could be coming into the facility, let's say even construction workers, or the subcontractors. Everybody has to be tested. Right now, since we have no cases, we're doing it monthly.
Good. And we have no cases, but yet, we have a governor and a media that's trying to scare everybody with this again, and force everybody into a vaccine or a mask again. And so, I mean, that's, I think that that's, as elected leaders, that's something that we need to continue to remember, that a lot of this stuff, in my opinion, is being politicized, and we need to stand against that, the political end of that.
And I will let you know, Commissioner, that in the facility, we are required to wear masks.
Yes.
We, you know, we have to wear a mask. If we're in our office, we don't, but if we are out and about, we do have to wear a mask, and I require everybody coming in to wear a mask. So we do have individuals that can't for medical reasons, and those ones are the exception, but otherwise, everyone has to wear a mask inside.
And is that your, is that policy that you, you have set through your, through your position at the detention center, or is that state mandates?
That's through the CDC. See, those are guidelines that are coming from the CDC that because of the, you know, the facility and because it's so, you know, and two, you don't want, once it gets in, it's very hard to control. So it makes it harder for the facility to manage, so we, we are wearing our masks. It is a challenge, but we, we try our best to.
But how does the CDC have influence or power over a county-funded and operated and controlled facility?
Well...
I mean, where, where does the CDC all of a sudden get all of their power and influence from? I mean...
Well, there's a, and, you know, and we do get direction from the Association of Counties as well, because they recommend that we require that they have masks. Besides, there's other requirements, but I'm not going to go into that, but we do work, try to make sure that everybody has masks, the inmates have masks. If they're moved from their pods, they will have to have their mask, the officer should have their mask, so that we, we're, everyone's being safe, as safe as we can be.
Yes, ma'am. If those masks are...
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
No. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Project Manager's Report. He was there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Trent Parker, Project Manager. Carolyn kind of gave y'all an update on the kitchen and stuff, so. There was a lot of moving parts in that, so I'm actually relatively happy that very minimal issues arose on that, so. It actually went pretty good. We'd originally planned for two weeks for that setup. We stringed it down to one week, just so that we could work on getting the existing plumbing redone in the kitchen. So it's, that's all underway. They did cut a few things while cutting the slab. There was conduits just right under the concrete, so, very minimal. A lot of that was already scheduled to be replaced with the remodel, with new electrical, because we're moving the existing electrical room to the new mechanical electrical, so. So a lot of that won't even have a cost factor to it, because it was already scheduled to be done, but. The laundry addition is on schedule, and everything's going great on it. It was one of the critical path items, and so they had nine weeks to complete it, and it looks like they're going to get it done maybe even a little bit early, so that, that's a...
Good.
...good news there. The new director's office addition is scheduled to be move-in-ready by next Wednesday, so Carolyn will be able to shift into her new office, and, and she has this sec, secure storage area and stuff like that in there that'll help with all the construction. We're having a hard time finding places to put stuff, the more construction that, that goes on. The slab on grade for the medical kitchen addition is being prepped right now, and they're, they're working on trying to get a, a date for concrete scheduled that's possibly Monday, so. The masons are on site, they have all their stuff staged and ready to, to start with the masonry walls for that addition, so. The rains let up a little bit, we were slightly delayed because of that, but we seem to be back on track now, so. But with the mobile kitchen and everything, White Sands Construction and Emergency Services, they actually aided a lot, so I want to thank them for all their help of, of getting that stuff set up and, and getting everything going. Buildings and grounds, they came, Superintendent there, Eric, he came and helped us wire up the freezers and stuff, so, a lot of, a lot of help and a lot of people, but we, we made it happen, so. The Lalu Solid Waste Station scales are complete, they're just working on the electrical to get them hooked up, and Ralph will have his seventy-foot scales open over there, and that'll be a nice addition. Timber-on-fire station, slab on grade is scheduled to pour on Monday. It was supposed to be this last week, but rains came in right before the pour and had, and we had to delay it. It is difficult getting concrete all the way to timber on, and so we're even having to do it in multiple pours instead of a single pour. The, the only company in town that will do a design mix won't give us more than forty yards a day, so that's kind of caused a little bit of a slowdown. Seems like every time we get the, get a pour scheduled, like, for this next Monday's a pour, we're forecasting rain all weekend, so hopefully, that's very minimal and won't hold us up again. The pre-manufactured building, that's going to be the, the structure of it, has been delivered and is on-site, so as soon as we can get some concrete poured, we'll, we'll be underway. The EOC, we met on it, we have, we're waiting on the final funding to come in, and, and, but we met with the architects, and so we're getting all the bid documents updated and getting everything redone, so that we can proceed with putting that one out for bids as soon as we have all the funding secured. One other job that we're working on, and we have it out, getting, we're accepting prices right now on it, is for the Sunspot Fire Department. They needed a new electric service. There was, the electric service we had was by the Observatory. They're planning on getting rid of a lot of that, so. Otero County Electric's going to be giving us a new service drop, and we just had to, we have to set a new service pole and run new service line into the building from a different location, but, so we're, the deadline for those bids is tomorrow, so by Monday, we'll have that ready to, for somebody to go to work on it and, and get it going. That's pretty much all I have.
I feel like you've been busy.
Little bit. Kind of all over.
When Carolyn was talking about they delivered that equipment and it was dirty, is she talking about new, like refrigerators? I mean, how, how can you have that dirty?
No, it's a, it's a forty-foot, it's a forty-foot trailer that the kitchen unit's in, and they brought it here, the company releasing from is out of Washington, but this unit was brought here from Alabama, and from, what we understand, it had been sitting for an extended period of time, so.
So it wasn't something we just purchased, it was the temporary?
No, this is a, this is a rental, and, but they, they did a lot, a lot of work to it, but it wasn't exactly what we expected to get from what we're paying for it.
So, on the detention center, when White Sands, how many days did they ask for, for rain delays?
That hadn't been completely assessed yet, so.
The other item is the guardrail issue out on, on the, the bridge.
Uh, we'll, uh, for Riada Road, for the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay. We have spoke with their head engineer, and they're working on getting a fix for that. It, it will be remedied. We had requested multiple times for that access to be there, so what we were told was that'll be, the cost of that will be picked up by the, the engineers to have that fixed.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you, Trent.
You'll have any, yeah?
Yeah, I want to pull eight.
All right, this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda items, and we have one item that needs to be pulled. It is consent agenda item number eight. Go ahead and open it up for discussion now.
Yeah, yeah, I just, on item number eight, the mo, the agenda item reads as such, request approval to award a professional service agreement to New Mexico demographic research for the amount of twenty-two thousand plus all applicable taxes. I wa, I want to, I, I'd like to have this agenda item on, on our next county commission meeting agenda, and I'd like for Rod Adair to be here to maybe answer some of our questions. This, this agenda item is in regards to redistricting our county in, 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 after the census has come in, according to the populace, there's three county commissioners. The population is divided equally amongst our, the commission board into districts, and I just, I, I just have, I have some questions about it, and, and I feel like, it's too bad Rod, it was, it's too bad it wasn't on our agenda and, and he wasn't here. One, one of the concerns that I have is, it says that the NMDR, which is this service, will provide statistical analysis of each proposed district, including total population, eighteen-plus population, and this one, number and percentages of census identifiable, identifiable ethnicities used in New Mexico, adult Hispanic, total adult Native American, adult non-Hispanic white, adult non-Hispanic Native American, adult non-Hispanic black. It just, anytime I see anything that discriminates people by their race, it always, it always raises concern. We're, we're supposed to be a community or a country that doesn't discriminate, and I think that this right here is discriminatory. You know, we shouldn't identify people by the color of their skin or their ethnic background. So if we, if y'all, if y'all would agree to... So if we, if y'all, if y'all would agree to that, just to pull this and then put it back on the new business for our next month's meeting, and reach out to Rod and get him to come to explain a little bit more of this to us, I think it would be better than just running it through on the consent agenda.
I don't have any problems with that. Is there, Pamela, is there any kind of a timeframe that this, would it be okay if we go to next month?
I know there's a deadline, but I don't know what that is. I don't know if the attorney might be there. By the way, this is Brad Springer.
How are you?
Thanks, Brett.
I do know there's a deadline. I don't know when it is.
But it's a state, it would be a state deadline now?
This is, this is state statute.
Well, I still.
Dictates this.
I still, I mean, even if there's a deadline pushing on us a little bit.
And I believe he lays out in the proposal a timeline.
Yeah, yeah, and of course, in the timeline, as in this proposal, it says that everything's been moved back because of COVID, and the timeline is a little bit, is pushing on us a little bit, but, you know, it just seems like every time there's a deadline, it's always because of COVID. Well, maybe, you know, if COVID can push a deadline back, maybe we can too, you know, as a commission board, just to, because this is, this is one of the most important things going on in our country today, is voting and is redistricting. We need to be extremely careful with both of those, and I would just like the, I'd like Rod to have the respect for the commission board, just to come and answer some of our questions in regards to this, to give us the peace before we just move on.
Commissioners, looking at the timeline, the census won't be released until September 30th, so his work couldn't begin until then anyway, so I believe you'd have sufficient time.
Commissioner White, what?
No, I'd just like to talk about it some more, and I'll come back.
Yeah, so if we can just pull it and put it on next month's agenda, and then reach out to Rod and have him come.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right, the other items. We need to go ahead and vote on that?
No, you can take it all in one consent.
All right, item one, "Request approval of accounts payable bills list BL number 53, BL number one, BL number two, BL number three, BL number three A." Item number two, "Request approval of healthcare assistance claims and deposition claims for August 2021." Item number three, "Request approval of July 8, 2021, regular meeting minutes." Item number four, "Request approval of resolution 08-12-21/110-03, purchasing policy additions, fixed access, WEX fuel card." Item number five, "Request approval of resolution number 08-12-21/110-04, two auction vehicles through government deals and online auction service." Item six, "Request approval of resolution number 08-12-2021/110-05, a grant agreement between Otero County and the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the Rialto Road/Pacas Bridge in the amount of $3,534,481." Item number seven, "Request approval to award RFP 21-020 insurance broker services to Daniel Insurance Incorporated, Santa Fe, New Mexico, for the amount of $35,000 plus all acceptable taxes for the first year with a 5% increase for subsequent years." This is a one-year contract with the option to renew for an additional three years, not to exceed a total of four years. Item number nine, "Request appointment for Tom Porter as a technical committee member and policy member to represent Otero County on the Southeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization." Item number 10, "Request approval to submit applications for the VFA grants to New Mexico Forestry." Item number 11, "Request approval to the fire departments to apply for assistance to firefight program through the FEMA." Item number 12, "Request approval to submit grant applications to New Mexico EMS Bureau, local systems improvement projects, EMS vehicle purchases project, and statewide EMS system improvement projects." Item number 13, "Request approval for fire departments to apply for physical year fire protection grant funds." With the exception of item number eight, which will be pulled into the next agenda, so I have a motion for approval of all the consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So at this time, this is going to lead us into the scheduled citizen communication, number 14, which would be Kathy Miller, Katie Jones, and Samuel Gonzalez would like to discuss the voting integrity.
Commissioners, you have a copy of the presentation. Unfortunately, the one I have is not in the, oh, there my.
Unfortunately, commissioners, Samuel Gonzalez could not be here today. He's in his second week of school at New Mexico Military Institute. He does have a letter for us to read, though. "Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to talk with you again. To recap again, my name is Kathy Miller. I'm a native of New Mexico. I've lived in Otero County most of my life, and I, I mean, all of my life, actually. I love New Mexico and I love Otero County. I'm here today to talk with you about election security. I'm a concerned citizen who believes in our election system. However, I also think there is warranted concern about the security of our elections. Is there a chance that the voting machines used in our county could be vulnerable? Since there is this potential of vulnerability, should we cast and count our votes differently? Consider how we close Highway 82 because of a chance of a rock slide. We order recalls on vehicles because of a chance of a brake failure or airbag deployment. If a drug has been determined to be potentially dangerous, there is a preemptive halt to its distribution. Baby cribs are determined unsafe and recalled just in case. America works hard to protect our citizens from potential dangers. As a retired teacher of Cloudcroft Middle School, I remember our superintendent calling preemptive school closings when the roads were icy and covered with snow. The right to vote is a precious American right. It's foundational to our country. Many have lost faith in our voting system and ask, was my vote cast the way I intended it? In fact, according to a Gallup poll reported by USnews.com, conducted on February 13, 2021, 59% of American voters report that they don't have confidence in the honesty of our election. If you want your citizens, commissioners, to trust our elections, please do everything you can to make sure that our elections are secure and go above and beyond to encourage everyone to vote and work to develop preemptive measures to protect this precious right, even with the slightest chance of voter vulnerability. As a concerned New Mexico Mexican, I realize there might not be enough proof of fraud right now with the Dominion voting system, but I still know that there's strong evidence of potential vulnerability. This is not a Democratic issue. This is not a Republican issue. This is a nonpartisan issue. This is a taxpayer issue, and this is a concern for all New Mexicans, all Americans. Okay, for example, I think if you'll recall, Michigan was the first state that brought a case against Dominion. In fact, a Michigan circuit judge approved release of an audit showing 68% error rates in the Dominion voting machine. The Federal Election Commission allows 1 in 250,000 error rate, or 0.008. The official purpose and conclusion of the audit states, and again, I'm quoting, "We conclude that the Dominion voting system is intentionally and purposely designed with inherent errors to create systematic fraud and influence election results. The system intentionally generates enormously high a number of ballot errors, 68%. The electronic ballots are then transferred for adjudication or review. They actually go into a file and are pulled up when needed. The intentional errors lead to bulk adjudication of ballots with no oversight, no transparency, and no audit trail. This leads to voter or election fraud. Based on this study, we conclude that the Dominion voting system should not be used in Michigan." Okay, the next part is I would like to just relay some of the contents of an interview between reporter Cheryl Atkinson and attorney Matthew DiPerno, detailing just how the machine used the errors, okay? First of all, the judge approved the examination of some of the voting machines in question. They took forensic images of the 16 SIM cards, 16 flash drives, and the main election server that was held in county buildings. All the machines were Dominion machines, like the ones we use here in New Mexico. The findings, the system is set up in a way to create massive errors. It has a 68% error rate. No matter what software version is used, you're running, which is higher than the federal limit, which is 1 in 250,000. Let's think about that just for a second. Okay, the Federal Election Commission allows one error in 250,000 votes. The machines are showing 68%, so 68 out of 100 error rate. This is crazy. By law, the machines have to have an accuracy rate that's so good, there's only a fraction of errors that can be found. Only 1 in 250,000 is the acceptable limit, instead of 68 out of 100. Okay, adjudication ballots, okay, those with errors go into a computer file, and I'm quoting, where they're held and then sent somewhere for bulk adjudication by someone with zero oversight. Again, that means no paper trail. This is not an anomaly. It extends to other counties and other states. It's the way the software is intended to run. It extends to other counties and to every state that runs Dominion, and this is in their official report. This error rate comes with the software, not something according to our forensic, that somebody in the state or county somehow programmed in or changed. In other words, this is not human error, according to the study. Interestingly, blank ballots can be run through the machine. It generates an error because they're blank, which goes for mass adjudication. It doesn't reject the ballot. It sends it into a mass adjudication file until needed. Secretary of State of Michigan claimed human error was the cause of this 68% error rate, which is not consistent with the forensic evaluation, which points to systemic machine and/or software error, excuse me. The judge allowed the report to be released, even though Dominion Voting Systems objected to the intellectual properties protection. So that's, that's what they don't want, is they don't want an investigation because of their right to protect intellectual properties, but they were able to present the findings without giving away any of that information. Okay, the Michigan lawsuit is still active, and as recently as July 15, 2021, DiPerno and his team filed a cease and desist letter to Election Source, a subcontractor of Dominion Voting Machines. Okay, and this is some breaking news. Michigan attorney issued cease and desist letter to vendor Election Source, which is a subcontractor of Dominion, to prevent them from removing data from election machines on the 15th. This is very problematic because by law, 22 months, you can't tamper with machines or do anything with machines for at least 22 months after an election. Okay, let's see, and this would erase data. Okay, let me see. Again, by law, data should remain secure for at least 22 months following an election, okay? This was a red flag to me, okay? Would you go to the next slide, please? The election from, Election Source, the subcontractor of Dominion, this is, this is the letter. "We will be visiting Blaine County on July 15 to perform preemptive maintenance on your voting equipment. There is not an upgrade at this time, just preventative maintenance. During the preventative maintenance, we will be removing the ICX batteries to prevent any issues with the battery shutting off your machines. Batteries are not necessary in Michigan due to the fact that we do not use direct recording electronic voting in our state." Okay. Recently, I had a little problem with my Subaru. It, I drove, turned off the ignition, and it wouldn't start. I went to YouTube to find out what the problem was, actually, my daughter did, and said that sometimes it just has a glitch where you need to completely unhook the battery and then hook it back up. Well, I did that, and it erased every control that I had in the car, you know, so this is a little suspect to me, okay? All right, let's see, go to the next slide, please. Okay, critics, and you can read for yourself or you can see it, but they said the removal of the batteries would wipe out data surrounding the 22 elections, even as another battleground state, Arizona, prepares to announce the findings of an intensive audit. Remember, this was July 15, okay? Down in the second paragraph, "Removing the ICX batteries will erase any volatile microelectric memory in the machine." All right, and the article went on to state that, they even said, "Secretary of States don't have to be, I mean, clerks don't have to be there. In fact, if you would like to even meet us at a location, a bigger location, just pick up the computer and take it to us," which I think is a violation of security. But anyway, it was a little suspect to me again, okay? All right, other lawsuits, of course, mentioned Arizona and Maricopa County, and there are 30 active cases in various states, including Pennsylvania and Georgia, right now, okay? As I began my research on election integrity, I tried to put aside my feelings regarding specific election. You know, there was such an contentious feelings in the 2020 election, so I decided to just try to put that aside. My research led me to more and more questions, and some of the answers I found were quite disturbing. I'm going to start with number one. How many voting systems are available to America? Do you guys know? No? There's, there's actually three. There's debate whether the three are connected somehow, but Dominion has about 40% of the market in, in America, and then the other companies hold the rest, okay? Number two, how can a voting system hold its own audit? If I was being investigated by the Internal Revenue Service, it would be great if I could hold my own audit, okay? What about banks holding their own audit? This is just, it's, it's something that we're being told is okay, but it's really not when you really start thinking about it. Okay, who owns Election Source? Okay, this is a website where Election Source has their information. They're the ones that were told to go in and get the audit. They're also the ones that supply election signs, the "I voted" stickers, pins, all the things for your election needs, okay? Number four, who owns Dominion Voting Systems? I'm going to let you guys research that one. How many names are associated with Dominion? Again, do some research. You'll find it kind of surprising. How many lobbyists are in Washington lobbying for Dominion voting systems? You'll be surprised. Okay. What is the 2006 Secretary of State project? Again, my research led me to different places with different information. This was a little disturbing. Did you know our Secretary of State in New Mexico is third in line for governorship if something happened to the governor and the lieutenant governor? Okay, what is the Secretary of State's job, and how are they held accountable? I was able to find out the first part really well. Her job is to make sure that elections run smoothly and that they're safe, but I didn't find anything about their accountability. Why is human error usually blamed in fraud claims? What do you think? I'm a teacher, so I'm asking you guys. It's easy. It's hard to prove, okay? It's easy for the poll workers, for, you know, get paid $30 a day, or maybe 60 now. I did it a long time ago. It's, it's easy to blame them instead of going a little deeper. Okay, how can I know my vote was cast the way I intended? Okay, how can I know my vote was cast the way I intended? Why are boxes and vans loaded with mail-in or absentee ballots discovered after elections? This is a big question. I mean, it seems like those votes should be held secure sometime, and they should be tallied, maybe the information not given out, but they should be recorded. Okay, can voting machines be hacked? Well, I'm thinking about the headlines. Recently, attacks are being reported more and more. They're common. What about the Colonial Pipeline attacks? It was last spring. I mean, that affected so many people as far as energy. Also, the JBS meat processors, this affected a lot of supply for meat in our country. You know, my brain is a little...
In regards to those hacks...
Yes.
Those hacks were outside of the government's control.
They were.
So that's evidence in itself that these hackers are operating outside of government control. In the JBS deal, I believe there was a ransom paid to these hackers.
Eleven million.
Eleven million dollars. So what the government is having to pay hackers not to hack into our food supply was to say those same hackers didn't hack into our election.
It's true. It's true, okay? It seems that they're working on our energy source, somebody's working on our food distribution, and could it be our vote? Okay, are Dominion machines internet-ready? Do they contain a modem or wireless card? They do. They do contain a modem. And just for your information, a computer expert let me know that anything with an IP address can be infiltrated, anything. Did New Mexico, this is a big one, pay $52 million? There we go. Dollars in 2019 for a three-year contract for a suite of hardware and software information technology agreements, okay? Pardon me? Okay. All right, next slide, please? New Mexico's at the top of the list, and this is a Forbes, but it says Dominion received $52 million from the state government. Services included the full suite of hardware and software information technology agreements. Okay, then there's Michigan and Nevada, and wow, okay. Next slide, please? Okay, Open the Books was a reference from the Forbes article that I went to, but this is a really interesting website, but you can see that it's a search by unit of government. Government has open books for the public. Dominion, which is a privately owned company, does not have open books for the public, but this one has an open where you can type in and find exactly how much New Mexico or the other states are paying Dominion, okay? Could we go to the next slide, please? And commissioners, I think, give a copy of one. I just printed out the 2019 payments, and New Mexico's highlighted. But let's see, where's my information there? I think we have those a little out of order. But some states divided in counties, like item 13, California said San Mateo County paid, you know, $100, but look down at New Mexico. New Mexico has a New Mexico state checkbook. Dominion Voting Systems, first payment was $743,900, supply inventory IT. And IT is what?
Information technology.
Information technology. That's what that stands for, okay? And look at, could I go to the next page also? New Mexico payments. Okay, every single one of them is to Dominion in the yellow. This is a cause for concern to me. We are a poor state. If you think about it, it seems almost like somebody's profiting off of our American right to vote. Figure this, at $52 million for a three-year contract, divided by approximately our registered voters, which is 1,350,181 voters, it's $38,513 per voter for three years. Or that breaks down per year, it's $12,453 per voter per year. It's a taxpayer, it's an American issue. You know, I imagine Dominion voting system presenting their products like the old-time vacuum cleaner salesman. This is the ultra-do-it-all-for-you unit that will take care of all your voting needs. We supply the machines, we create the ballots, we maintain and update software and hardware, we scan and we count every single ballot. We find errors, and then we adjudicate them when necessary, and we maintain your voter rolls. We even provide an audit of your own machines. At just $52 million, it's a bargain! But wait, there's more. Our subcontractor election source will also supply your voting materials, your stickers, your signs, your notices, your pins, and installation of battery updates. Dominion, doesn't that mean control? Is your one-stop shopping bargain for all your election needs? Pardon my sarcasm. In 2014, Dominion Voting Systems came to New Mexico under the direction of then-Secretary of State Diana Duran, our own Tulareostian. All 33 counties in New Mexico used Dominion voting systems. During her term, Dominion's image cast evolution unit was adopted, which according to Dominion is a precinct-level digital scan ballot marking device and tabulator that is designed to perform three major functions. I think I have a Dominion slide. Do I have that next? No? Okay, but this is according to Dominion. They, it has three major functions: ballot scanning and tabulation, ballot review, adjudication, and second chance voting, accessible voting and ballot marketing, and then later, machines to accommodate disabled or added. They were, if you can't fill in the oval, they were touchscreen, okay? Ballotopedia, this is a really good site also, and it led me from the Forbes article, but it gives acronyms like optical, let's see, Optical Scan Paper Ballot Systems, or OPS, but that's kind of interesting to read. But let me, Ballotopedia reports that New Mexico uses hand-marked paper ballots with an optical scan and ballot marking devices and systems, BMDs. A BMD allows for the electronic presentation of a ballot, electronic selection of a valid contest options, and the production of a human-readable paper ballot, but does not make any other lasting record of the voter's selection. BMDs are used by all voters in some locations. We don't use that one in Otero County, to my recollection. Our county uses paper ballots. I mark the choices and fill in the ovals, and then I scan the ballot into the machine, I push the vote button, and I am rewarded with a ping. And the ping is supposed to tell me that my vote was cast the way I wanted to. I question that. Okay, but I still didn't really know if my vote was cast the way I intended. My own experience, I voted in the 2020 election, I voted early, about 20 days or so, and after the election, I went ahead and said, "You know, I'm just going to check, see if my ballot was cast because of all the media coverage," and it wasn't. I went to New Mexico's site, and my vote was not cast. I immediately called the county clerk's office, and they kind of pooded me a little bit and said, "Did you hear the ping?" I said, "I did, but I still don't know if my ballot was cast the way I wanted it." She kind of went around a little bit and said, "You know, there's nothing to worry about, there's nothing to worry about." And my vote did show up, I think, the next day. This happened to my husband, this happened to my daughter.
Yeah, we ended up having to talk to Robin Holmes, and then I think it was two or three days later, our vote finally showed.
There should be a way, if you early vote, you absentee, you mail-in or whatever, that it is recorded, taken care of, and that is held securely until it can be pulled into the election pool. Okay, where am I? All right, next slide, please? Okay, so you can see New Mexico is about the fifth from the bottom, hand-marked paper ballots, BMDs for accessibility, okay? Thank you. All right, all right, ready? Okay. Now Katie Jones will relay some information concerning New Mexico counties and the election of 2020. This information was compiled by 18-year-old Samuel Gonzalez, who couldn't be here today because he is in his second week of school at New Mexico Military Institute.
Okay, so I'm reading it for Samuel Gonzalez. It says, "Commissioners, my name is Samuel Gonzalez, and I am 18 years old. I apologize that I am not able to speak with you today. I am a new cadet at the New Mexico Military Institute and reported August 4. Today, I am writing to you about election integrity for the state of New Mexico and for Otero County. I was one of the millions of Americans ready to watch President Donald Trump get reelected as the 45th President of the United States. At 7:00 PM, when the polls closed for our state, I focused all of my attention to New Mexico, watching each individual county closely as they began to report their results. Trump and the Republicans were leading in most counties and were running close behind in Santa Fe, Bernalillo, Taos, Rio Arriba, and Doña Anna County. The state was trending red until around 9:00 PM. Most of the counties were now reporting 45% of their election count. That's when it changed. I noticed that three counties suddenly flipped from red to blue, McKinley, Socorro, and Sandoval County. I looked closer and watched as their official reporting dropped from 45% to 40% to 20%. That is a major decrease of 25%. Let me be clear, it is normal for the percentage of votes per candidate to change, but not the official county count. I was watching on the Fox website and thought that there might have been a glitch in their algorithm, but I was wrong. This was happening on every major news network website, CNN, CBS, MSNBC, Google News, Apple News, et cetera. In the counties where the race was close, Republicans behind with less than or equal to 10%, their numbers also dropped, but at a much smaller and slower rate. Between 9:00 and 11:00 PM, the contested counties' official count dropped between 1% to 5% until the gap between the Republicans and Democrats was greater than or equal to 10%. But these irregularities were not just limited to these counties. Official count fluctuations could be seen in almost every New Mexico county. Even Otero County experienced these anomalies. During the same time period, Republicans were ahead by over 65% of the vote, but I watched as the official count of the county went down by nearly 4%. The Republican vote went down from 65% to 61.6%, and the Democrats increased from 32% to 36%. I watched as more county counts fluctuated between 1% to 2% until I went to bed at midnight. After watching what happened in New Mexico during the 2020 election, I believe 100% that New Mexico went red. Not only do we have Republican Representative Yvette Harrell, but I guarantee we also have Representative Michelle Garcia-Homes, Representative Alexis Martinez Gonzalez Johnson, and Senator Mark Roncetti. We have all seen how easy it is to manipulate electronic voting machines. Many machines in other states have reported a 60-plus percent error rate, which is much higher than the legal standard, 1 in 250,000, or 0.0008%. We can no longer trust the integrity of our elections if we continue to use faulty machinery such as Dominion or other electronic voting machines. Mail-in ballots are another major problem in our state. During the 2020 election, 361,193 mail-in ballots were requested, he has requested. That is an increase of 2,198% from 2016. 60% of these ballots were for Democrats. However, these numbers do not account for the ballots that were mailed to individuals who did not request ballots, or the ballots that were filled out by deceased individuals or without adequate information, missing signatures, addresses, et cetera. Right now, a far-left activist group is pushing a recall election for Otero County Commissioner Koi Griffin. I have heard that they are pushing for a 100% mail-in ballot-only election. This is unacceptable. We need to make sure that every vote, whether Republican or Democrat, is heard and counted accurately and fairly. It is clear to see that this is just another ploy to remove one of the strongest and passionate voices of the conservative movement. If Mr. Griffin is recalled, then Governor MLG will appoint one of her far-leftist loyalists and replace him. A Democrat hasn't served in Otero County as commissioner since 1994, and it's quite clear that the people would like to keep it that way. We need to have confidence in our elections and our elected officials, but right now, that trust has been strained. 2022 will be my and my best friend's very first election. I plan to vote for America first, but my friend has no faith in the system. She told me, "Why vote when people who run our elections are just going to put in whoever they want anyway? There's no point in voting." This is voter suppression, disregarding the will of the people for their own personal gain and convincing the population that their vote doesn't count. To prevent another 2020 big lie from repeating itself, we must discontinue all, or use of all electronic voter machines, implement stricter mail-in ballot regulations, and have 100% transparent elections with paper ballots. Right now, Roosevelt County is leading the state in voter integrity, and I, along with my fellow citizens, ask that you follow their example to secure free and fair elections in Otero County. However, this is only the first step to election integrity and to prevent future fraud in our county. I am asking that Otero County be the first to conduct a full forensic audit of the 2020 election and to lead as an example for the rest of New Mexico. A map created from military intelligence by Captain Seth Kesheal shows that Otero County experienced moderate voter fraud in all voter databases. Captain Kesheal has also found that the state of New Mexico had 84,000 excess votes for Biden. This doesn't, this does not consider all votes that have been flipped. There is overwhelming evidence to prove widespread fraud that has been committed in our state. All we need is someone brave enough to start the process. Commissioners, New Mexico is in a dire situation. The people want to know if 2020 was the year our rights were lost, or if 2020 was the year that brave men and women stand up for what they know is right. I believe that evil can only prevail when good men do nothing. I ask that you do something. Don't just do it for me, but for my friend and for every citizen of Otero County. Thank you. Sincerely, Samuel Gonzalez.
I have a couple of other, after I was with you last month, I had a couple of other people come forward. I have, let's see, let me just read this one. "Our names are Twyla Lewis, Presiding Judge, and Beverly Bell, Election Judge. We worked the election last November at Panyo, New Mexico. It was the first time we worked with a new system of having no printed ballots and using the computer system. It is our understanding that the tabular machine was, our machines are not to be hooked up to the internet, but the computers must be in order to sign in people and print the ballots. When the polls closed, Beverly Bell was going to call in the results of the first tabulator tape printed, as we have always done. Yet, when she called, she was told they already had our results. The question, how they had the results already if the tabulator was not hooked to the internet? We have talked to other polling places, and some have said they did not have to read the results off to the clerk's office, but one other polling place told us that they were told the same thing we were told. This has caused concern, and we would like to know why some places were already at the, some places were already at the clerk's office when the polls closed, and others had to verbally deliver results over the phone. If tabulators are not supposed to be hooked up to the internet, how were the results delivered to the clerk's office? Signed, Twyla Lewis, Beverly Bell, 8/11/2021." Okay? We had another citizen come forward. He is from the Weed area. He's here today. Would it be possible for him to read his letter?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Walt, would you like to, Walt?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Walt Kaufman from Weed. First, I just want to say I want to thank Katie and Kathy for taking this on. It's a contentious issue, and I don't envy the flak they'll probably get on it. So I want to read my letter that I addressed them. Glad to see you and Kathy bringing up election integrity right here in Otero County. After my 2020 experience with convenience centers, closed rural polls that suddenly were opened, requirements for internet access, rumors of rural votes transmitted by internet, and then the voting machines. Don't even get me started on voting machines. And did I mention the internet connections? I've lost faith in Otero County election integrity. I've lost faith in Otero County election integrity. The Otero County Board of County Commissioners rubber-stamped all of this. And I guess your local convenience centers were all working and open, and you got trust whatever line the county clerk has fed you. Never mind that many rural voters were about to have a poll tax in the form of a long winter's drive to Cloudcroft. Note that rural Otero County voters were the ones affected, and they were--they're--they vote conservative. City folks, Almagordo, what have you, had no hurdles placed on them. Then suddenly, it all changed. But first, my conversation with our county clerk. Robin Holmes, Otero County Clerk, was no help to me. I called her, I mentioned to her the winter drive time over some mountain passes to the approved Cloudcroft Convenience Center from the rural hinterlands. I mentioned the Wuhan virus, the lines to vote, and I mentioned the old, long-established voter-accepted polls that were located just a couple miles away from most voters. She listened to me, but gave no comment or commitment to change. She suggested that I and the other rural voters just mail in our ballots if we didn't want to go to the poll. She said she had a special deal with the United States Postal Service, and I have to tell you, I'd like to see that deal. I'd like to see it in writing, and I'd like to see the audit trail for that deal. Anyway. And she said this was to ensure that these mail-in ballots would not go to Texas, or wherever they would be routed normally by the postal service, and then come back to Almagordo and then to clerks, but instead, they would be safe. And I have to say, I think, based on talking to her, that she believes we're a bunch of mountain hicks. And who would believe this postal service story? I mean, come on. And I want to add something right here. You know, since then, the post offices turned out to be a partisan agency of the government. Their union voted overwhelmingly to support Biden, for example, in this election. So anyone that would say there's no problem using the post office for votes, I think they're not looking at the situation. Sure, it may be okay for them this election, but who's to say that won't change in a year or two? Anyway. I mentioned to Ms. Holmes something called chain of custody, and how past elections had me putting my ballot through the scanner, me doing it, and it would drop into the lockbox. No one would touch the ballot but me. That's how it used to be. The votes then went by deputy sheriff to the clerk's office. And I'm sure you guys are aware that they record this on a USB card, and then it's sent by the sheriff's department to the county clerk. And the reason that they do that is for chain of custody issues. It doesn't get sent on the internet. It doesn't get sent to Uncle John in El Paso for him to look at first and then sent on. It goes straight from the box, from my ballot, to the clerk's office, guarded by a sheriff's deputy. That's how it used to be. I compared that, and this is talking to Ms. Holmes, I compared that with her proposed method. You know, drop my ballot in the mailbox. There's no telling who would have possession of the ballot, no telling what had been done to the ballot, no telling how many people were involved in this process. Ms. Holmes saw no problem with that. And I suppose that her idea is no worse than digitizing these votes and then sending them around on a VPN, a virtual private network, or the internet. Because that, again, in that case, there's no telling who has access to that VPN or that internet. And even with security logs and all that, this 2020 election twaddle describes a weaker system than we had a decade ago. And as I say, progress for who? It's progress for who? And at that point, Ms. Holmes did hang up, and she was very polite. She listened to me, and I have no complaint with her listening or anything, she just didn't respond. Shortly after that, several other people talked with her, and she conveniently found that there was internet access available in Weed, Panyo, and a mail. Woo-hoo! And so they could approve convenience centers in those locations. And apparently, you've got to have that internet service, and I'm sure it's real secure internet service. And talking to Katie, I said, "I know you're computer literate, and not addressing voter ID over networks at convenience centers, which is a big problem, and just sticking with the digital vote data. There are some issues that when you convert ballots to digital form," and you guys are hearing some of that today. This conversion is rife with the opportunity for widespread fraud. It is so easy to cheat on a grand scale, or just a scale enough to shift the election. It's so easy to hide any kind of cheating. I don't know how to tell you that, but they've given you some examples. And I would say to you guys, I bet every one of you's had some of your data stolen from the internet through a credit bureau hack, or, you know, no telling, could be any number of hacks. But everyone's personal data's been partially hacked. And some of those companies, as I'll go on to say here later, have full-time IT staff, and that's all they do is security issues. That's what they work on full-time, and yet they're still hacked. Just something to think about. Paper ballots naturally can be fraudulent too, but it is many, many times more difficult. Paper may be audited in a straightforward, time-honored way. Paper is not convenient, it's not fast, it's not cheap. All it offers is security. Digital stuff can be manipulated easily, very easily. In fact, given time is almost certain, it will be manipulated. One only has to look at the banks and cities and the states and the local governments and the hospitals that have been hacked. And as I say, I bet you've had your data stolen. Few people have not lost some kind of data. I'm guessing everybody here in this room has had their data, part of their data hacked. Yet, votes are so much more valuable. And our Secretary of State and clerk apparently see little problem in relaxing security for easy convenience. I guess they feel they are the special people that cannot be hacked. Note that most large-scale hacking has been against these entities that have a full-time IT staff. And that's not some rural New Mexico clerk's office we're talking about. You know, if you look at the security in the credit bureaus, for example, just to pick one that was hacked recently, and then compare that with our clerk's security here in this Otero County, is there a comparison? And yet, we trust that. And as I say here, wouldn't ransomware be a tragedy for us in the county? If all that digitizing danger, and this is, I'm talking about digitizing the paper ballots, securely sending votes over the internet, or VPN, same thing, is a step over the edge, in my view. It's very difficult to do that securely, especially if you mix in the convenience. We want to be convenient. And I have to say that those two are at odds. You have security, you have convenience. They're not--they don't work well together. And if you don't believe me, go to Holloman and try to drive in without checking in through the gate. Wouldn't it be real convenient to just drive in? Yet, you're stopped and asked questions, and, yeah. Why do they do that? Well, it's security. So the more secure you are, the less convenient it is. It's just a rule. Anyone can send data over VPN, but the security part is not so easy. Encryption keys, hardware access, administrative privilege, and on and on and on are just the beginning of the pitfalls. Again, maybe New Mexico is special, and no hackers dare look, or maybe we're not special. For sure, there's no forensic audits here. I doubt, in my view, that Ms. Holmes has a skill set for this network setup and management, and in fact, I doubt she could even select or manage a vendor and be assured that no fraud was taking place. Sources tell me, and I just heard it in writing, that votes were sent by internet in 2020 election. And I'm sure that was very convenient. Think how wonderful that is. Instead of having to wait for the deputy sheriff to trudge up there at midnight with his little USB card and a box of ballots, I just call him up, say, "Hey, what'd you get for an answer?" And they bang-a-wang-a. Wonderful, huh? Very convenient. The push for convenience centers, and convenience in general, has overshadowed the overarching need for security and integrity in elections. I believe that the Board of County Commissioners and the Otero County Clerk have failed to set up and ensure, first and foremost, that we have secure election process, open and auditable. They have failed to publicly confront and resist the New Mexico Secretary of State when she directed changes that undermined election integrity and legality. And I have to note that that's probably a blanket statement that is not correct, because I know some of you, in fact, did fight that. That's not what I wrote here. This can be corrected going forward. I hope you address the needs and convenience the clerk and Board of County Commissioners. I hope you can address the needs and convince the clerk and the Board of County Commissioners to take responsibility and action. As you can tell, I do not support digital voter data. I believe the convenience is offset by the cost of security and the necessary forensic audits. It only makes sense if you leave out these key guaranteed election integrity steps. Looking forward, I believe an integral part of the solution is transparency. If data must be sent over a network, that should be discussed and not hidden. The counting system should be open. If it is digital, how will it be verified? And on and on and on. And I conclude by saying, thank you so much for asking the questions. With today's polarized politics, asking for election integrity is not popular, unlike pushing for convenience. Since I'm here, and it would save me coming back, I just want to mention to the Commissioners that Maggie's little election handbook is really cool. If y'all haven't looked at it, it's 358 pages. It's not that long as far as government bureaucracy goes. And you know, one of the things that, I'm new to this actually, and I didn't realize how much power you three guys, and y'all, have in the election process. You actually are mentioned in that handbook 62 times. And there's stuff you can do easily to make the election secure here in Otero County, and you don't have to rely on the Secretary of State or the clerk. And just one illustration, and I won't go into the details, because it is a long book. When it comes to convenience centers, do you know who approves the use of convenience centers here in this county? Question? Yeah, you do? Yep, you do. Convenience centers require internet. So right away, you'd be saying, "Oh, yeah, I'm not so sure about that." It would be transmitting data over the internet. And what do they use that for? Well, in theory, reading the little handbook that she wrote, you're just going to do it to print ballots and to verify voters, or, you know, who they say they are. That's according to the handbook. But you guys could say, "No, we don't," you know, the word convenience sounds so wonderful, wave the flag and everything. But when they were telling me I was going to have to drive to Cloudcroft in the wintertime to vote, stand in line with all the other COVID sufferers, that didn't seem convenient to me. And see y'all stepping up and saying, "Oh, this is not convenient to these people, this is infringement. It's a poll tax, basically." I didn't see that. And I was unhappy about it, but because of the way the election happened and my incompetence, I didn't come up and yell at you all about it. But you have the right to come up and say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, timeout, timeout. Before we do a convenience center, talk to us about security." You could ask that question. When they, if you look at the Secretary of State's website, what does she say about security? Pretty much nothing. She does audits, you know, and if you look at the audit, it's not a forensic audit. They just recount the ballots. And she does mention passwords. But you know what a common password is? Password! Right? People get equipment, you know, modem or whatever, and the default password is passwords. They just leave it. The Secretary of State does not address those critical issues. At least she didn't in that document. Maybe she does elsewhere, who knows? But you guys could, you could ask questions about whether, before you allow a convenience center, you could ask questions about security. If the clerk cannot convince you that it's secure with detailed information, you could not do a convenience center. And by the way, what would happen? Well, people would have to vote in their precinct, which they've, what, 10 years ago, that's what we did. And frankly, it wouldn't impact me a bit, because I, there's no way I'm, I vote in Weed. That's where I'm going to vote. So I would say there's not a great deal of impact. Some slight convenience, but a whole lot better security. And just, I'll leave you finally, because I've talked more than I need to. In this, in the handbook, Maggie discusses, you know, three things she's going to use machines for. One's to print ballots, one's to confirm a voter who, you know, ID. Those both, she says, require some internet access for a convenience center. So, all right. But there's a third thing, and that's the vote information. And you guys see the difference, right? Print a ballot's not the same. Finding out who the voter is, that's not the same. But now, when you cast a ballot, that's voter information. Okay? Just talking about that for a second. I'll read the law, and this is by statute, and it's also in Maggie's handbook. "These machines shall be standalone, non-networked election systems." And I'm not going to read the rest of it. That's enough. So if you have poll people telling you that they already had the count, and you have a law that says these machines will be non-networked, you have prima facie evidence that that was, that election was not done correctly. And yet, y'all certified the results. So I just throw that out to you, that you might be inclined to say, "Well, gee, the problem is with the Secretary of State's office, and we just, we're helpless. We can't do anything." And I hope I've convinced you that actually you do have a penny in the pot. It just requires some work and asking some questions, but you could perhaps help make the next election we have more secure. Thank you.
All right. You know, something that I did, another question that I had was, you know, why can't we make voting accessible to people? Make it easy for voter, but also marry that security? That's what we all want. We want as many people to vote as possibly can, no doubt. But we also want to make sure that our vote is cast as intended. Okay? So, in order to provide election integrity and make sure every person's vote is cast as intended, I am asking you, counting commissioners, to implement these measures. Use paper ballots to cast votes instead of using electronic machines. The proof is not out there that these machines are not faulty. We need to hand-count ballots, no doubt. I can't believe that it would be more expensive than $12,000 per voter per year, how much we spent on voting machines. Use humans to update voter rolls. Make sure that that is done. You know, I have reports that somebody who died three years ago is still on the voter roll. We need to make sure that those are cleaned up. Implement a system to tally mail-in votes, early votes and absentee votes, the day they were received. Develop a secure and easy paper trail. Secure these numbers until election day. We need to have no more ballots, oh, we found this many boxes, you know, hidden in a closet someplace. We need to make sure, I mean, for the integrity of our elections, for voters to feel like they can go-- We need to make sure, I mean, for the integrity of our elections, for voters to feel like they can go and have their vote count. We need this. In closing, how much more will we, how much more will you Commissioners allow before taking preemptive measures to secure the voting in Otero County? How long will taxpayers allow $52 million payments to Dominion Voting Systems? Or $12,450 per voter per year? Critics will say that securing votes works to suppress voter turnout. False. I say we, we, why not work to secure election, and in turn, this will get people more voted, more motivated to vote? Again, how much more will we allow? How long will we ignore justifiable evidence pointing to problems with the Dominion voting machines? How long will we allow limited paper trail that does not trace the ballot back to the person who voted? We need proof of the votes, that votes were cast as intended. How long will we allow mail-in, absentee and adjudicated votes to remain in limbo and then suddenly appear after the election? How long will we just accept that is how it has to be? We got to ask questions. We got to start looking for answers. We got to start looking for ways that it benefits all Americans, all New Mexicans, all people of Otero County. And finally, Commissioners, time is of the essence. There is probable cause to consider, consider using the Dominion voting systems. Reconsider using the Dominion voting systems. Don't take my word for it. Begin your own search. And you guys, I do appreciate your time so much, but this, this is foundational to, to America, to Otero County. Begin your own search, ask questions and look for answers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to add just a few things. You know, whenever we, whenever we certified, canvassed and certified the last election, I was very much opposed to it. I had strong arguments against doing it, and a lot of those arguments were built on all the speculation around the Dominion voting machines. Unfortunately, I was outvoted two to one, and the elections were, were certified. But we can, this is where the rubber meets the road, right here on the county level. We can, we can make this stand. We can, we can assure that people's votes are legal and, and counted correctly. But, you know, I, I've been able to have some, some great contacts just out of the way. Seth Kessel, that's noted here. He was at my house just a couple, well, about three days ago before they left to the, to the symposium that's going on right now in South Dakota. David Clement, the professor from the Professor's Record, he's just right over the hill in Las Cruces. That's where he lives. And, and Sidney Powell, she's someone that we have direct contact with as well. So in saying all of that, these are, these are some of the leaders in the forefront of election integrity today. And I believe that all three of them would only be just a phone call away to maybe get them engaged right here in Otero County. And maybe, you know, anytime you start anything, the seed's got to be planted somewhere. In regards to election integrity, well, I see it right here on the record.
That's right.
And one more thing with Sidney Powell, I've said before and a thousand times again, you can ask Sidney Powell, what is the, what is the, the solution for election integrity? You can bet your boots, you can say two words, paper ballots, paper ballots. All this digital stuff that's stored on these machines, a lot of times we have county clerks and secretaries of states going, oh, no, you know, they, the machines weren't hooked up to the Internet. I can Bluetooth into my phone right here without being hooked up to the Internet. There's such a technology called Bluetooth where you can access digital information without something being hooked up to the Internet. You know, so this Dominion system, whoever has created this technology has the keys to enter into that technology. If you build a house, you know everything about the house. And Dominion is compromised. It's fraudulent. And Otero County, in my opinion, we need to get as far away from it as we can. And all the experts and all the geniuses at the top that try to give us all this security in, in this technology are the very ones that are controlling and manipulating the people. We got to break it loose at the bottom, and I think that we can do it by working together. That was, that's my opinion.
That's good. You know, I've, you know, I believed in our voting system. You know, the first question kind of popped up, whether things were on the up and up with the 2000 election with Gordon Bush, the hanging chads. That's when all these machines started, you know, they, they saw a need for them. Let's, let's start making these machines. So it was after the 2000 election. So, you know, I understand. I want to believe that, that things are on the up and up. But, I mean, the evidence is saying that they're not. And so, you know, I understand. But it is.
You mentioned in the tabulation of the vote, it was like 68%.
Yeah, 1 in 68 is kicked back.
Were they counted in this space?
It could be anything from blank, a no vote. The information also said it could have been a folded corner. It could have been.
The bubbles not being filled out.
Yeah, the bubbles not filled in correctly, but I know there was just a multitude.
So did those get counted?
Yes, they were put into a computer file until adjudication time. And then a team that is not, there's no paper trail. We don't know really where or who adjudicated them, decided who, how this voter wanted to vote. It happens, and then, then they're, they're tabulated. So there's, there's no oversight for the adjudication process. All right. Any other questions?
I don't have any. You, I have several for you. Just a second. Robin, you had a question?
I'm Odie Prather from Pinion. I don't know if this infuriates everybody like it does me. The machine was not to be networked, yet we find out it was. Nobody knows how their vote was cast. That infuriates me. I've been wondering about this for 20 years. How was my, my vote actually counted? We're not allowed to know that. It infuriates me. And another thing that's infuriating is Dominion makes the adjustments. They do the adjudication. Who's monitoring that? There are thousands more questions you can ask.
Amen.
So my recommendation or my advice is the county adopt resolutions to prevent this.
What I'd like to say, if I may, I haven't seen any of you guys in my office checking to see what our process is. How do you even know what we do? I mean, you're talking about, I'm sorry, my name's Robin Holmes. I'm the county clerk. But you're talking about Michigan.
Yeah, Robin, Robin.
Yes.
Can you come up and so we can get you on record for what you're saying?
And if I could have Denise, my chief deputy.
Have y'all worked at the polls?
Good morning, Chairman Mathelies, members of the board. I don't know where to start, but the first thing, I guess, is I can't believe all these accusations, and they don't even know how we run our elections in Otero County. They're saying that votes are sent electronically and that we should have paper ballots. That's all we have, are paper ballots. We have no electronic voting. There's, it's all paper ballots. I, I don't know where they're getting their information. When we have the computers at each one of the convenience centers, that is to verify that that person does qualify to vote, that we can print them out a ballot in their district. That's all that that does. Then they take their ballot, they run it through a scanner, a scanner that has no guts. All it has is a card in it. And it's a scanner. It's basically a scanner. And they run their ballot through there, and that, that vote is recorded on that card. That card is brought to our office at the end of the night. That's where we get our numbers. There's no numbers on the computer. There's no connection to our scanner. It's a standalone scanner with no guts, but a card in it. So there's no way that the votes are going over the Internet. I don't, I don't understand where, where their accusations are coming from.
Where does the confusion come in that they already have some numbers being reported?
They were probably told, no, we don't need your numbers because we can't hand interim any longer. They have to be read through with a card. We used to have the mountain areas and all of the outlying communities call us in with their numbers because we could hand interim. Now we just basically interim all with the card that comes from the machine. So we don't take down their numbers. They don't call them in any longer.
How does the computer verify the voter?
As the person comes in and gives their name, their address, part of their social or their birth date, and then they look it up, they verify that that's their information, and they sign. They're printed out a ballot, and they're, they take the ballot and the permit sheet, they go and fill it out, and then it goes through the scanner. The ballot stays in the machine. Everybody votes on a paper ballot. There's no electronic voting. We have trails. Nobody has asked to come and watch us certify machines. We have a process where we can check and verify that each ballot is being counted the way that it's marked. And the reason he couldn't call Mr. Prather, you can't call and say, how did I vote? Well, it's a private system here. We can't put it, we can't expect to find it. Okay, let me see how, oh, let me go see how Commissioner Markwart voted. No. Once every ballot goes through the machine, each ballot looks identical to every other ballot other than it says a precinct number on it. We have no idea whether it's your ballot, your ballot, your ballot, whatever, because it's a private system. That's what we do. It's a private vote. Everybody is, is supposed to have a private vote without being able to somebody to find out how they voted.
So going back to my question on how does, how do you, how does the computer verify the voter? And you've told me, how do you verify that the information that that person just gave you is correct information and it's not somebody else?
They give that information to you. How, are you saying, how do I know that that's that person?
There's no voter ID. There's no, I could go in there with my dad uncle's information that y'all haven't purged off of the rolls yet, and I could give you his Social Security number and his address, and you could give me the ticket to go vote, and then I go vote for a dead uncle, right?
Well, that's something that you need to take to your legislatures.
Or we could do right.
You need to have.
No, because in the election code.
No, we can't.
It's just a vote goes and gives their name, birth year and address. We are, we don't make the law. We follow the law.
Sure, yes ma'am.
And that's something you need to, yes, yes, sir.
My frustration is with the process. Please don't miss it.
But she's absolutely right. Go to your legislators. Get voter ID. We do not have voter ID. We cannot do it here.
We have an oath to these people right here to protect their right to vote. Our, my oath is not to the state. My oath is to the people of Otero County. And if the state laws aren't working, then we need to make.
Then we need to change them with our legislators.
No. Why? So we can continue to be dictated by our state legislature?
That's how the, the law works, though.
You know what? I don't have to say Maggie Toulouse Oliver, so we can be subjected to her?
She doesn't have anything to do with this. It's our legislators.
She's got, she's got influence up there.
Well, and that may be, and that's your opinion, and that's fine, but it's our legislators that make our laws. And in the state of New Mexico, they do not want voter ID.
And again, my oath is not to the state of New Mexico. My oath is to the people of Otero County, as well as my fellow commissioners. Our oath is to the people. And if something is going on that's, that we feel is unconstitutional or doesn't give us the safeguards that we need to know that our vote is being protected, now, now that responsibility falls on me, as well as my fellow commissioners, to make sure that our oath, as well as yours, you take the same oath.
I take the oath to follow the law and to practice the law. I don't make my own laws.
So do you think that it could be a possibility that somebody could come in and give you a fake Social Security number and a fake birth date and could possibly vote? Could that be a possibility?
That's possible, but they have not proved that it's happened.
Yeah.
Where our voter.
There's a possibility, Robin.
There's always a possibility.
It's your duty as you're under your oath to make sure that that doesn't happen. Not just sit back and go, well, you know, nobody's proven it or nobody's got, if there's a possibility, then that's called leadership and that's called standing on your own.
And that's calling breaking the law because I can't ask for ID.
Well, I'll tell you what, my, 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 my oath is more important to me than anything because I believe we're bound by our oath in the same.
Well, I feel like the people that elected me expect me to follow the law, and that's what I do.
Okay, one question, Robin. You follow the law like you're supposed to do. Can Otero County bring an ordinance when you come to, excuse me, when you come to a voting station to show an ID?
No.
Why not?
Because it's the law. It's passed by the law. You cannot.
You're following the law. Why cannot, why can't we?
Because that goes through the state legislature. It's not in our statutes. In our statutes, it says we cannot ask for ID. If they want to willingly give us their ID, we accept it. If they want to give us their voter card, we accept it. We even have a sign that said, if you present your voter card, it'll be much quicker to get through the line. We encourage it, but we cannot ask for it unless, if somebody has registered to vote by mail and they have not vote, and they've not voted at all, and they didn't send us any form of ID, the first time that they come in to vote, they are required to show us ID. That is our ID. In New Mexico, what the ID law is, is that if somebody comes into my office and, and somebody in my office sees somebody registering to vote, okay. But if, if voter registrations come in through the mail and they show no ID, then that person has to show an ID the first time they vote. That is how the voter ID is in New Mexico. It's when they register to vote, but not when they vote.
So we can't pass an ordinance? Our first, our first question for our new legal counsel over here. Can we, as a county, can we, can we pass such thing as an ordinance through our commission board which would require voting ID? Do we have the constitutional authority to do that on a county level?
Thank you for that, for that question, and thanks for having me here.
Yes, sir.
Brad Springer. The general rule is you can adopt more strict rules, but you cannot be in direct conflict. But I haven't researched the election statutes to give you the precise answer to your question, but that's the rule.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and by us, by us putting some kind of voter ID in place would only be, would only, would only be strengthening security, which we, you would think we would be able to have the legal right to do. I mean, it's not like relaxing, yeah, Walt.
And I don't want to distract this is a great conversation, but I'll point out something for you. The convenience center, and I use that word, I hate the word convenience, it sounds horrible. It allows anyone to anywhere voting place in the county. Let me describe weed in New Mexico. When I walk in to vote, you know what happens? They say, hi, Walt. You know, it's here where you sign. They know me. So if I went in and had my grandmother's Social Security card, and I said, I'm feeling gay today, and I'm actually Martha Kaufman, and you know, whatever. The poll watchers would, they'd say, wow, you know, you're lying. I'd be in, in jail probably if they're doing that because they would know that I'm taking it. You guys in the urban areas, you know, you don't have many, you know, you've got lots of people going through a poll, and so it makes it harder to filter that because they don't know anybody. That's not true in Mayville, weed, Benning, they ask them. So one thing, if you did away with the convenience centers, you would cut down on some of this fraud that's potentially happening. And yeah, I know, convenience center is really convenient for the parks office, just to let them know it's going to be mine. And I'm just throwing that out as an example of how you might, as county commissioners, push the system towards security. And you know, I think you've got an uphill struggle with lawyers trying to have a, an ID because it's so contentious. I don't think the commission can get away with it, but I do think you could go and say, well, look, we, we don't want, before we do convenience centers, we need to talk security.
So can I address a convenience center? So a convenience center is something that the whole state has gone to. We, with, the state cannot go back to single precincts. It's all voting convenience centers. We don't have a choice in the matter. The only choice we have is where they're located at. We don't have a choice in going back to having each precinct. The deal with each precinct, what he's talking about, is because we are such a large county, for several years, we had four voting convenience centers in town, and then we had our, I think we had 12, we had 12 rural precincts. The 12 rural precincts. The twelve rural precincts got, um, signature rosters printed out, so that if it was at Weed, Timbrom, Penyon, Mayhill, any of those places, those people had to go there to vote. Their name was already printed out on a list. There was no computer to find out whether they voted or not. That's the reason that the voting convenience centers, that another reason we have the computer, not only because we can print out their ballot, that means because we have fifty-nine precincts in Otero County. So, if we didn't have that system, each precinct or each voting convenience center would have to have fifty-nine different ballot styles, because that's how many there are, how many precincts there are. That's the convenience of the computer, is we can print out as you come, we can print out your ballot. With the other way, when they were, when it was just a rural precinct, they would come and sign. That was not secure at all. You talk about that, okay, so somebody comes up to Weed and signs, and then he goes down to Alamo Gordo, and he wants to vote. How secure is that? He's not on a computer up there. We don't know that he voted in Weed. So, the process that we had to use at that point is we had to make them vote on a provisional ballot. If they were in one of the rural areas, that's what they had to do if they came to a voting convenience center. Then they complained, because they don't like filling out all that information. So, we've changed it to a point that we have all voting convenience centers, so wherever any voter is on election day, they can go vote at that location. The computer allows them to do that. And the only thing the computer does is print out their ballot, and it flags them that they have already voted. That way, they can't go to another convenience center and try to vote again, because they're flagged that they voted. If they've applied for an absentee ballot, it flags them in there as well. And also, to talk about absentee ballots, that everybody thinks we need to, um, have some kind of tracking system. Well, if you would come to our office, we'd be happy to show you. We do have a tracking system. When they're mailed out, when an application's mailed out, it's on their name. When a ballot's mailed out, it's on their name. When it comes back, it's under their name. We have a tracking system. We don't have boxes in any closets. We have our ballot boxes set out right there in front. That's where they go once they're checked in. They're checked in, and they're put in the ballot. They're cross-referenced. We count, we do a count on the computer of all the ballots that we kept, we took in that day with the ballots that are in the box, to make sure we didn't miss any ballots, getting them scanned in. So, there is a system. On election day, or usually five days prior, I bring in my absentee board. They are the ones that we count the ballots, they count the ballots. We turn them over to them. They sign an affidavit saying they have so many ballots. They are the ones that open the ballots. They count the ballots. They run the ballots through the machine. We don't have anything to do with that. It's all on the boards, and all the boards are always ballots. They're always partially Democrat, Republican, Declined State, Libertarian, whatever party. They're always a balanced board, so it's not ever done by my staff, by my office. We don't have anything to do with that. So, there already is a tracking system in place.
So, my next question is this handbook that Walt was talking about. Do you have that handbook?
If he's talking about the election code, absolutely.
Is that the one you're talking about, Walt?
It's, I don't know.
I believe it, because I gave you one. I gave you an election code.
I don't know. This one's the twenty-twenty-one. It's on the internet. It's called the Election Handbook of the State of New Mexico, twenty-twenty-one edition.
Yes, we just, in fact, we were just at a training, and they just had it printed up, and we just received them about three weeks ago.
So, Walt?
First, I, we kind of segued off the point that Commissioner Griffin was discussing a little bit, and I just have to reapply to my kind of slope. With respect to, uh, you know, somebody having their grandmother's social security number and so on, football. The old system, where it was very inconvenient for the park, uh, made that more difficult, especially in rural precincts where there are people who walk in and people are there. It's hard for you to lie about who you are. Uh, the new system where you have the convenience centers scattered around allows it more easily for fake IDs to be used, because you just go somewhere, and they know you're going to make up stuff. That, that's-
Well, you don't even have to have a fake ID. You just have to tell them the name and, you know.
That's, that was the thing we were talking about, the outside track. I wanted to point out in, in Maggie's election handbook, uh, something I just, I thought I just heard that, um, you know, I think you, Clark said, um, we are required to have convenience centers. That, that is Walt. Well, um, unfortunately, I did not bring that copy, get that part of it, but I, I would encourage you to read that election handbook and look at what the Board of County Commissioners has to say about convenience centers, and whether you have to have them, whether you're required by law to have them. I think you'll find, in the way the rules and the books say, is you decide whether you want them or not. The, the Secretary of State doesn't dictate that you have them. And, uh, I'm sorry, didn't bring the language with me, but if you'll look in that handbook and do a quick search on convenience centers, it's about fifty, seventy hits, but you're up to run down, but you'll see the Board of County Commissioners has decisions about where the voting places are, and about convenience centers. So, I would ask you to look at that, because that's, that's what you have statutory in, in that handbook that you can do. There are sixty-two references I mentioned to you, where the Board of County Commissioners is mentioned. And those are the powers you have over the Secretary of State's office and over this clerk's office, in order to make the elections work here in Otero County. I would just urge you, just put in, uh, you know, county commissioner, and you'll search through that document, and read what they say. You've got the power to do it. And don't listen to what I'm saying or what the clerk's saying. Listen to what the document, the laws have to say.
But you know, and you know, and in regards to this subject right here, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be so defensive and just try, and so frustrated. We should be wanting to work through this, you know? I mean, we should be-
Well, absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, everybody, it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Republican.
Exactly.
We all should want to know that our, only legal votes are, are cast, and only legal votes are counted. And, you know, I mean, how, how do we-
Commissioner Griffin, I wish, again, that, uh, that you all would come in and see our process, how we get these tabulators ready, all the processes we go through, all of our election rules and laws and dates and everything we have to follow. Apparently, nobody knows what we do.
When, when was the last time the rolls were purged here in Otero County? Did y'all-
Um, in June.
Okay, so it was just recently then?
Yes.
The, really, my-
We're gonna have a certification next month, and we invite everybody to come and watch the way the machines are certified.
When is that? Do you have a date yet?
Um, we have to, yeah, we have to wait until we get the, um-
I'd like to be there. Let me know when that is.
It'll be on our website, but we'll let you know for sure as soon as we get our, our cards.
So, Robin, who, who, who tells us what machines we have to have?
Um, the Secretary of State has a board that certifies the machines, and that's what we have to go with.
So, we have to go with the domain or whatever type they give us?
Dominion.
Yeah.
How is the internet tied in with, with our system down here? That seems to be a hot topic.
The internet is not, um, is not tied into the Dominion system with our, our scanners at each of the polling locations. What happens is, um, on election night, we receive a standalone laptop that we send our results. Our cards are read into, and they are sent to the Secretary of State's office. Now, mind you, we have the card, and we also have the tabulator, or the, the, the results that are printed out of the machine. And so, we have to verify that those match. That's what you guys do whenever we do a canvas. So, you know for sure there was a zero tape, then there was the tabulation tape. Those are the same exact numbers that were read through the card. All that card is, like I said, all that is, is a scanner, and it's just tabulating what votes are. That's all it's doing. Then it's read into that computer, and it's downloaded or uploaded to the Secretary of State's office. Then we go through and verify that again. There's, there's all kinds of checks and balances. The, the votes do not go through as people vote. They do not go through electronically. They stay on that card. Not to mention, we have all those paper ballots that are in our possession for twenty-two months. Not to mention, we do audits after each election. There were audits done. They select different counties that do them, depending on the closeness of the race. If it's in one-half of one percent, those are done. So, there's audits done all the time. There's rechecks and balances done. So, all this stuff you're talking about is done here in this state.
Is there any way you can get us some handbooks?
Absolutely.
Probably us three, and then one for this gentleman right here, so he'll know what we're gonna ask him.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you know, and, and-
Also, I would like you guys to read this handout that, that Denise has prepared for you from Dominion. And it answers a lot of those, those things, all of, a lot of those accusations. And if you'll go actually to page, I guess it's four, where it says, um, "No, Michigan's Dominion voting system tabulators do not read ballots incorrectly sixty-eight percent of the time. The so-called forensic analysis report that is being referenced, while ambiguous and technically incoherent in many places, does not even try to make this claim. The report is severely flawed, having been produced by Russell Ramsland Jr. of Allied Security Operations Group, a firm with a history of spreading disinformation as part of error-prone affidavits for lawsuits, i.e. mistaking Minnesota for Michigan, for example. The Michigan Attorney General and Secretary of State categorically dismissed the report's credibly, credibility, stating it is critically flawed, filled with dramatic conclusions without any evidence to support them. A review of the analysis by any independent federally accredited voting system test laboratory can easily refute this disinformation." And there's several questions answered in this.
Why do we even need, why do we even need? I mean, I would think that we could have enough volunteers and enough people that care about elections to volunteer to count the paper ballots.
Let me-
Let me finish.
Okay.
Without even needing any digital machines or ev- I mean, anytime anything is stored digitally, I don't care if it's on a chip or on a hard drive or where it's stored at, or if it's passed digitally, there's always a place where it could be compromised. Why can't we just do it the old way and just vote on a paper ballot and, and, and make sure the person is who they say they are through a voter ID and do it like that?
Well, let me answer to that. So, um, when people, okay, we do have a process that we run a hundred ballots through the machine, and then we have poll workers that will tabulate those and count them. And I can't tell you how many times the person that has tabulated them are wrong, because it doesn't match the number in the machine, and they recount it, and they see that they, they did it, they configured it incorrectly. So, we do have that-
I have more confidence in people than I do machines.
Well, I'm telling you, it, it's happened several, several times. There are more mistakes made by people than there are machines.
I have a, just a short statement about your ID-
Uh-huh.
... regarding the voter ID. I'd just like to point out that not ever, uh, most, most of the time, you need proof of residency to get an ID. Not everyone has a residence. A lot of people live in multifamily homes, and the right to vote is not just a right to vote for people with residence.
Sure.
It's for every American.
Sure. Sure.
Walt?
Um, well, this is contentious, I think.
Yeah.
You know, I guess the last election that, that is all very interesting process. Um, and, and I think the clerk's correct in that we're guilty about all coming down to the office and asking the question. Um, and I would like to suggest, Robyn, that, uh, the website that she has was, would be the perfect place to show a diagram about what you want, and so that the ignorant masses could look on the website, figure out how it works, and feel good about the process. Right now, I look, I've looked at the website, over the Secretary of State and the clerk's, and I don't, I don't have long fuzzies about how, why all this comes together.
Sure.
Whenever this home talks, I, I feel better about it. But frankly, I'd like to see it in writing on, on the website, or someplace I could look at it and, and understand the process, and maybe even ask questions about why it's in display and not some other one.
Sure.
That's one. Two, uh, the so-called artists that are used to, the Secretary of State, if you look on the website, if you look on the website for the Secretary of State, you know, she has a lot of long fuzzy stuff on there that's great. But if you look for security, there's not much there. As a matter of fact, the only thing I could find, uh, biggest evidence was audit.
Yeah.
If you go and look at audit reports, because I think, well, hey, this is what the government needs or other, right? You find that really the audits are not much more than just counting, uh, recounting what the machines are showing. They don't do a forensic product where they actually look to see if there's fraud and stuff going on in the election. They do a, they, as a matter of fact, the guys that do the audit actually have a statement on there. We don't, we don't ask to look at the machines and see if they were a problem or the software was a problem. We don't look at that. We were told not to look at that. We have no opinion on that. And again, I'd, I'd ask you, Commissioner, just go on the Secretary of State's, uh, website, look under security and bangle lango, and read a couple of those audits, and see what I mean. It's a perjury thing that they can use to say, "Oh, well, we check everything." Well, we come, we come to see that that's turned out maybe not be true. That's, it's not a law, it's just not the constitution.
I'd like to also invite everybody to come to our election trainings, which will have probably four election trainings prior to this election, um, and it will be the last week in October. It'll be on our website. It'll be, you know, on the, on the radio, wherever else, but I'd like to invite everybody to come, so that they see the process that we use, the way we train our poll workers, um, all the information, any questions they have. They're more than welcome.
Ma'am, in the, in the back, go-
Well, you kind of, I mean, you already answered some of those questions, but, I mean, I heard you speak that your oath is to the people, and I'm sure the county clerk did the same thing. And, I mean, this is going back and forth, and I'm just listening and going, "Well, could there be a mistake? Maybe? Could you maybe go and try and find that mistake? Could we go and see it? Could there possibly be a question on this election?"
Yeah.
I mean, we are hearing, there is a, a large group with Mike Lindell right now up there, and they have some forensic evidence. Could there be this forensic evidence that we're seeing? And it said that all fifty states have fraud, all. So, could there be in our county?
That's humility. That's what we should have, you know? I mean, we should always-
So, we should work together, as you and the county clerk and the commissioners, you've taken that oath for the people, for us, to do something about it. And let some other people, some citizens, I'd be volunteer, to be on your, on your commission, on your board, to, and my name is Gail McCoy, and I'm writing for Village Council up there in Cloudcroft. But I think that we need this, uh, coherence and cohesiveness in a group, not fighting against each other. And if we're wrong, we're wrong. Fine. But find out, could there be some fraud?
Great intent.
Mrs. Lang?
Denise Lang Brown. I would, I have worked multiple polls at multiple places. You've seen me at Borough Plats, and, well, loose elementary, the convenience center, I've been at your purchase, audits. I invite everybody. There wouldn't be a bunch of people listening to unfactual alternative facts. We've heard a lot of things that simply are not true accusations. Robin is explaining, and any of us could be part of understanding, this is not true. We waste a lot of time with absolute nonsense, absolute lies. And if you would participate, not just here, but understand, we are a nation of laws. We go by the law. But if you would participate, you would see exactly how we see the machines, where the ballots are going, why we have audits, why those audits show that the votes we voted for, they counted the way we did. Because we're listening, everybody, instead, there are Democrats, Republicans, all of the other parties. Everybody's actually looking at these and if there's a question, they say, well, it doesn't look like that to me. And somebody says, well, it sure does to me. And you get to participate and then we wouldn't waste all this time without to look by. Because some of what was said was just not true.
Well, that's your opinion, then that's your opinion too.
My opinion is simply agreeing with the facts that Robin has presented.
Okay. That's your opinion. Go ahead, Walt.
Just two quick observations, because I spoke too much today. First, Commissioner Griffin is quite right to mention that part of the process is still a digital process. And we have USB sticks and they really transmit it, so all over VPN, global network of some kind. So there is that. And I would also just throw out, this is probably the most important thing that the commission is gonna address. When it comes to voting, that's the main part of our democracy, our republic, is that vote business. And so making sure it's secure is a critical issue. And you've heard people here today saying, you know, I said, I've kind of lost faith in this process. And that's not a good thing for our republic. So if the, if the missions can come together to improve the system, maybe, I don't know. Maybe it's just a way to get information out to those ignorant people like myself that don't understand the system. That would help, you know, turn this around. There has to be a solution to help people do accuracy, but maybe just improve the way citizens understand the process. And there's a lot, as you can see, there's a lot of ignorance out there on how things work and there's suspicion because of that.
Come and be a part of, a participant. We'd love for you to participate with us, not just be a spectator and just think, you know, what we're doing. Come and ask us. We will show you, we have no problem. We have the utmost transparency in our office. Everybody's invited. We would love to go through the process, but can everyone, yes, sir?
Can I be thrown on that vote like that?
No, sir, it's a private vote. That's what this, the whole United States is, on a private vote.
And I would like voter identification for a simple one. And I would also like to do that, prevent confirmation of voter ID.
And that would be something, if you had a, if you had an ID when you voted and then when you vote, you break off a little tab that you give, and then he can go home and get online and look at that number of whatever, you know, to confirm the vote, that the vote was, that was counted.
But it's going into a tabulator that has no guts. It's not going to a computer. The only thing that is showing that he voted is that he was issued a ballot. Okay, he came and he came through the line and said, I'm so-and-so and I need this ballot, whatever. And they find him, he signs for it, gets a ballot. That's the only thing that shows on the computer.
But the absentees, you can track the absentees though, right?
Yes, yes.
So how, how, what's the...
Well, it shows that a person has, if you go to Secretary of State's website, it will show that you, this person voted early, where they voted at, or if they voted absentee and were issued the ballot, the date, the time, if it was returned. So all that is on the Secretary of State's website.
But not how they voted.
Not how they voted.
We don't know how they voted.
Because, and the reason those ballot on demand systems are on VPNs is because it prevents from a voter coming to an early voting site or an election day site and going from one location to another one. That's what it prevents, is the fraud there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would add, history has shown, if you take history classes, when there was a way for somebody to show who they voted for, there were people paying for that. So if I could show I voted for Denise Geda or Joe Blow, somebody was willing to pay for that. So they realize that's wrong to be able to do. When you go through the audit process, however, if you actually volunteer and work at that, you see, these are the ballots. This is how all these people voted. And as we go through and count them, you see that this count is the same as the count that's on the tape that got sent to the state, that's added into all of these totals. And you can see your vote, even if you don't know which one of these people who voted for Joe Blow the same as she did, you can see all of these votes got counted for Joe Blow. And then you can see that that's the number that they're sending to the state that gets added into all these tabulations. But you see that if you participate in part of the audit, you see that percentage of actual ballots and they're counted the same way that the papers will show.
Robin, can I have my chief?
Go ahead.
I would like, what, like she said, that I'm just the chief deputy and not the clerk no more, but... You know, Robin and I have been in office for 37 years. We're there, just like she said, we're transparent. We invite you to everything that we do. This, I have notes, Twyla, that you said that we received the totals from you all, from weed, before you all even sent the card in. That's not true, that couldn't be true.
Well, I, I would work through the computer stuff. So I asked Fairley, will you go, she had the tab, she said, hey, would you go call it in? And she was back there just shortly. I said, we didn't have time to call it in. They did, she said, no, they said they didn't need it, they had it.
See, so that's false, right there. That's not true.
That's right.
At one time, at one time, we used to receive the call from you all, like Robin said, from the mountain areas and we could manually go in there and those were considered, the canvas, what do you call it?
Well, they were the caller that we...
Yeah, but they weren't certified results yet, until the canvas, okay? So, yeah, so now we actually wait for the deputy to come and form. They're pretty quick about that, to bring the card. We read it into a secure system. We have our elections coordinator, read that into a secure system, which is uploaded to the Secretary of State's office. That's why the results are on real time and so quickly.
Then why did you take weed when they called? Because he said they called again.
That must have been two elections ago.
Or it could have been one of our workers that was a new worker.
I can answer that because we take the phone calls and they refuse not to give them to us. We told them we did not have to have them because it comes on the card and they said, well, I'm giving to, giving them to you anyway, so we took them back.
And another thing, Mr. Walt, and I want to thank everyone for their concerns that you all have. But, you know, going back to the lever machines, going back to the touchscreen, now we're on this tabulator, you know, what do you want to do? You want to go back? Let's say, and, you know, these voting convenience centers. Let's say you're down here now in Alamo, the polls close at seven o'clock. You don't have time to get up there to weed or pinion, wherever you live. So you go right here to the civic center. It's convenient for you. It's, you know, it's, it's connected to the internet, I mean, to each other and show that you are, you can go vote at the voting convenience center. We're trying to make it convenient for everybody. And that's one of the conveniences that we're making it. We can't go back in time. We need to go forward.
Yes, because if you're asking me a question, let me just answer it real quick. Voting to me is a privilege for all of us.
Yes.
I've done it for a long time. Frankly, I block out time. I know where the election is. I go to my polling place and I vote. I make sure that I do that. I suppose that, you know, something could happen to me and I couldn't make it. But one thing wouldn't be that I decided to go down to Alamo or buy a burger or something that day. Instead, I said, this is more important to me than anything. I want to vote. I'm gonna make sure I do that. Either I'll do it at seven o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock in the evening if I have to do something else during the day. And what you're saying is convenience is so wonderful. I'm saying, sure, okay, fine. But I'm also saying that while convenience, there has to be security. And I've heard secure system mentioned, okay, well, don't you just...
Come see them, come see what we have.
Miss Miller, Miss Jones, you all mentioned, you know, how much the machines are, how much was paid in for these machines. You can't put a price on voting. That's the way I look at it. That's very important to me.
I think that's the way we were looking at it too, so it's either way. And then, and the question was never, the question was never if you guys are doing anything wrong. So I don't understand the defensive, because it's never been maybe you're doing something wrong. We just want to make sure that it's, that we have integrity no matter what.
Well, I assure you, of Cheryl County does.
And that's how we're...
And we always have.
And then I don't think...
And please kind of watch us.
Okay, but I don't think that's saying anything, we were saying the lies because we just did research and we just did research and we're just asking questions. Because this is a discussion episode, we're coming to discuss and we're just simply asking questions.
Thank you for bringing that forward so we could get out what we do in our office and to invite everybody to watch our processes that we do in our office.
Sounds like that'd be the best form of research.
Right.
Absolutely. Yes, and I agree, I think we should, I think, and I will do that next time. I agree with that.
Well, you work the election.
Yeah, we hire you to work the election.
Let's do it.
Okay.
There's a lady right there.
Wait a minute. I've already got a lot of people, so we have to see, but you can give me your name.
Yeah, no, I think that's very appropriate.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you.
Yeah, you've given us a lot of homework and it's good. Y'all did a great job, you bet.
One last thing, I would love for Dominion to order an independent for a third-party poller. Just to clarify, I mean, I wish they would. And I went to their website also, but it's easy for them to say when they're the creators of the machine and they both have technical power. So anyway, just food for thought. We are an autonomous body in Alamo County as far as we can oven ourselves.
Amen.
We do have statues from the state, but we are, so it doesn't hurt.
And we shouldn't be.
And I appreciate your service also. I mean, I did, but it's not, it's not you.
Yeah.
I know people are following protocol, this is exactly what it's...
It's a privilege to be there for you all and we thank you all.
Is there any other questions for, on this subject? All right, well, that's, appreciate everybody coming on this.
Thank you.
Many questions will be asked, I'm sure. All right, moving on to item 15. Mr. Lancer and Mr. Tom Thomas, it would be presenting a quarterly report for Alliance for Regional Military Support. Oh, you praise her?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to, for us to report on the work of our Arms Committee. My name is Tom Thomas and I'm the civilian aide of the Secretary of the Army Emeritus for West Texas. I'm also a member of the Executive Committee of the Arms Group. With me today are John Bailey, State President of the Association of United States Army and Vice Chairman of the Arms Group. Also here is Lance Lair at the end of the table here, former Command Sergeant Major of Fort Bliss and Secretary of the Arms Group. We also have with us Mr. Ed Brabson, who is the premier military expert on Holloman and in the Alamo-Gordo area. And we work extremely close with Ed. We are here today to give you an update on the process, progress we have made during the past few months and where we're going in the future. COVID has been a hindrance, as you can well imagine. Face-to-face meetings with military, senior military leaders in the Pentagon has been next to impossible. And even meeting with our political leaders has been difficult. However, we're forging ahead and doing the best that we can. If you refer to the mission and strategy, if you go take that next slide, it has not changed from the very beginning. And neither has our focus, which is the next slide. So now Lance Lair will update you on some of our accomplishments and John Bailey, sitting next to me, will tell you about our plan for the future in consultation with Cypress International, which is our consulting company located in Washington DC, and our partners in El Paso, Horizon, Alamo-Gordo, and Las Cruces.
Commissioner, thanks for, is that, am I, am I checked, checked, 22? Okay. So as you can see, I hope you read the readheads. This will make, the readheads will make it much quicker and easier. Next slide, please. So basically, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read you the slides because I know during while you can read. So I'm just gonna tell you that we do meet regularly with all the elected officials in the region, as well as DOD officials. So I just met with the Congresswoman from Texas 16 and I also just met with a DOD leader last night, by virtue of Zoom. So there are still meetings going on, there are still, you know, we are still advocating very strongly for the region, particularly Alamo-Gordo and Otero, but they're just not happening in person. We're hoping for the in-persons in September with the Air Force Association and in October with the Army Association, United States Army meetings. Those are the two big symposiums everywhere, every year. And we generally go to DC twice a year at least. And one of those is the symposiums. And so we are attending both of those. And so we will talk to the people that are necessary to talk to in consultation with our consulting group, Cypress International, and with Ed and all the folks, and you folks, based on what you want to do. So any questions on that accomplishment slide? I will hit Medical Command and Defense Health Agency. So not sure how doubted you are on the medical changes in the, in the DOD arena, but the Defense Health Agency has basically taken over control of the way health is administered. So instead of the opposite of Surgeon General of the Air Force running Holloman's care facilities, there's a director at DHA that's now layered into that. And so that is, that is something that happens that Congress decided on in order to better streamline and cause prices to go down. That hasn't necessarily been the case. And one of the problems that we have with it is there are cuts, especially to DOD practitioners that don't execute what you would consider to be combat medicine, i.e. cancer, pediatric, things like that, that many vets and families need regardless. Okay, so we're gonna continue to work on that. Next slide, sir. And we, these notable accomplishments are more towards the Army Futures Command and Air Force Works. Testing and evaluation of big things here in, at Holloman and also at White Sands. And the two shall meet on a regular basis. So we are very, we are very vocally active in advocacy for both what's going on in Alamo-Gordo and what's going on in White Sands. I've heard of the tie these two together because they are an extricate type, especially when it comes to the major testing exercise, the exercises that are being run. So you've got Project Convergence 21. This is an ongoing exercise and you'll see this on the way forward. But basically, this is an all-service exercise. Heavily involved will be Holloman Air Force Base and White Sands as well as Huma, Huma-Proming Ground and others. So we're keeping that, we have a great relationship with Army Futures Command. So we're able to get information on this. And as you'll see, we're trying to get some, some actual on-the-ground invites for folks to be able to go out and see with their own eyes what's going on. So any questions on the notable accomplishments before I turn it over to John Bailey? Excellent. Mr. Bailey, next slide, please.
We appreciate it. And as we talked about, we are really focused forward on getting things taken care of for Holloman, White Sands, and Fort Bliss at the same time. We'll really continue to focus on the modernization and that is the barracks at Don Anna and McGregor Range. Really getting those up. We're working with all the congressional folks to actually get money put into the budget, get into the appropriations so that we can actually start getting those built and revised here in the Mexico area. One of the big things that we're working on right now that comes up in September is we are working with all the school districts through Alamo-Gordo, Otero County, Don Anna, Las Cruces, and the El Paso School District to do a STEM event. We have access to a former astronaut who is going to do a STEM event for students, teachers, administrators, to really talk about the importance of STEM and what the military has to offer in terms of STEM. That it's not just all guns and bombs and things like that. There's a lot of stuff that goes on outside that. So it's really a focus on why STEM is so important in our schools, why kids need to be involved in STEMS, and how this astronaut was able to use the STEM to go to space and do the space show. So that's something we've got scheduled for September 8th. We'll make sure that you get an invite to it. You're welcome to sign on and see what goes on with it and how things are going. We're also working very... Uh, we're also working very fo-, uh, much with sustained and safe off-post affordable housing. It's one of the things that DOD looks at for stationing events, is are there off-post housing? We can't house every airman on a Holloman, so we've gotta look outside. So we work with, with the local folks and really looking at some of the opportunities and what we need to do to take care of the off-post housing. Next slide, please. As Lance had mentioned earlier, Holloman Air Force Base is gonna be a major, uh, player in the Project Convergence, uh, coming. And this is the opportunity to really do a, a shakedown, check on all the new equipment, systems, everything that the Army, the Air Force, Navy, Marines are working on. The biggest goal here is to make sure that it's, it's exchangeable amongst the services. The Army doesn't have their system, the Air Force has theirs, and the two shall never talk. This is a way to make sure that information sharing is going through regardless of what branch we're in. So Holloman is gonna be very vital in that. And as Lance said, we're working with the leadership to get VIP dates for elected officials, and we'll make sure that you kept engaged on those type of things. Uh, and we are engaged with the, uh, the leadership for the Holloman, White Sands. We talk to them on a regular basis, making sure we're getting money into the appropriations. We work very closely with each one of the installations to understand what their needs are, so that we can advocate, get that type of money put into there. And we are participating with the Alamogordo leadership on the Air Force Association, their income conference, the end of September 20th to 22nd. And then, as Lance said, we're also going to the Association of United States Army. It's our opportunity to meet with a wide range of people and really talk about the region up there. Next slide, please. We also have, um, an opportunity coming up. We've, um, invited Alamogordo Economic Development, Otero County, Las Cruces, Don Anna, to sit in with, uh, the Fort Bliss Garrison Commander. And really do kind of a, a 101 on what goes on all the way through it. So as, as you know, Fort Bliss is mostly in New Mexico. So there's a lot of impact, there's a lot of impact that Fort Bliss brings to New Mexico. And what we realize is that a lot of the economic development, uh, folks within the region don't really understand what that impact is, or what their opportunities are. So we're meeting with the Garrison Commander. We're doing a lunch-in, lunch-and-learn. We'll have them, uh, come down, sit down with the Garrison Commander. They'll talk about an Army 101, what's going on with it, uh, what the opportunities are. And by the same token, what we've talked to the Garrison Commander is, they need to know what the economic development plans are for each one of the, um, counties and cities around the installation. So we'll be doing that exchange of information to make sure that we really are getting that information out and giving our economic development folks an opportunity to understand where they have some opportunities to really grow the, the economics in their areas. We are planning meetings with, uh, Congressional delegation and Pentagon officials. Um, we will be out there working with them and making sure that, that we're advocating for the area. And then we're also looking at, um, how we work with the grant program for economic development. And, and we've got this link up there. We've shared it with all of our economic development partners to really look at how they can drive some money into, into their locations. Next slide, please. And with that, short sweep. We'll take any questions.
You, you were just mentioning about the meeting with the Garrison Commander. When was that?
31 August.
31 of August.
And it's at, um, I believe it's 11:30 to 1:00 at the Centennial Club on post. If you're interested in attending.
In, in El Paso?
Yes. And if you're interested in attending, just let us know. We'll make sure you have, uh, we get, uh, clearance on the, the gates and that type of thing with it. It should be a very interesting conversation with their economic development folks and the Garrison to really understand how the two work together.
And I might add that it is true. We have talked to a lot of economic development folks, and it is amazing how much they don't know about each other. You may think you know a lot about Holloman and what they're doing, you know what I mean? But is it nested? I don't know. Are you nested? Probably better than Fort Bliss, because that's the last folks we talked to. Not nesting, missing. And so that's what we're trying to make available, is a nesting of priorities, so that if there are capabilities available for, you know, at, at Holloman or Fort Bliss, that you can take advantage of, then you should be able to take advantage.
Any questions?
I don't have any, sir.
Well, we really appreciate the opportunity to come in and do our, our quarterly briefing, and, uh, we'll make sure we keep you updated on, uh, Project Convergence. And if you're interested in the, uh, economic development meeting with Garrison, please just let us know.
Okay.
Make sure you get you on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Before we get into the unscheduled communications, I'd like to take a little short break to a quick, or do we even have any signed up?
No, other than the letter that I found from Raquel Morris, and I believe who's commanding did have some comments.
Okay, can you just take a quick?
There's a contact that, 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 that.
There.
Failed to put that up there. Contact information isn't listed.
Okay. And it's in, I think we've got it.
Why don't you put that up?
Gerald, it's, Gerald, it's in this.
Oh, is it in there?
Yeah, it's in our book.
Okay.
Yeah.
You should have read it.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's in our book.
Yeah, so those are all in there, and, and, uh, I probably should make those with the members. Um, we found that.
All right, thank you.
You gotta wear it.
I don't know. I'll wear it when I cut my grass.
Ms. Tilbrook, you have the letter that came in, you'd like to read?
Yes, this is from Raquel Morris. She says, "I asked you to read a letter last meeting about the lack of access to the county meetings for the disabled. Even our city government schools boards have hybrid meetings. Why doesn't the county? What are you afraid of? Giving citizens a voice? I wrote the county to see if any accommodations have been made for citizens to appear telephonically or by Zoom, but never heard back. On the agenda for the meeting today, Coy Griffin will be discussing COVID mandates. This is a man who, two meetings prior, had no single clue that health orders had changed to follow the CDC's current guidelines. Guidelines I expressed concern over because we didn't know the real-world efficacy of the vaccine. I beg that the county, I beg the county to still require masks, especially in closed quarters like commission meeting. None of you listened. The CDC guidelines changed where, changes were not buried in an obscure news story at the time Coy was confused on the topic. Probably to Coy's shock, these recommendations have changed once again. Who on earth advises what citizens should do during a health crisis outbreak, yet not track latest studies, information surrounding the issues at hand? That responsibility, irresponsibility and recklessness, that is irresponsibility and reckless, to say the least. We need sane leadership that keeps with current data, not people who rely on veterinarians or memes to justify or pass policy on how to respond to medical crisis that's killing local citizens. Why wasn't the county commissioners, why wasn't the county commissioners talk to our local pediatricians, who are at their wits' end right now? Talked to Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center about how we don't have a pediatric unit? How sending children or adults to the chimp facility for treatment might not give those folks a fighting chance at life when they need to be admitted into a real hospital to be treated by real licensed, licensed humans? This isn't about politics, this is about science. It's about being decent. It's about our hospitals not having enough ICU beds, ventilators, nursing staff, and no ECMO. It's about giving everyone a chance at life. Coy says he would take a shot, a bullet, to protect our rights. He would lay down his life to defend our freedoms, but refuses to take the vaccine because he fears it might kill him. Won't wear a mask either. This makes no logical sense at all. So much for giving your life for freedom, life and liberty of fellow citizenship, that's fellow citizens. Three things you cannot appreciate if you are dead. A real patriot makes sacrifices and backs it up with actions, not words. However, the fear Coy generates lines his pockets with cash. Saving lives has no financial benefit for Coy, neither, but divisions and misinformation does. We need to stop letting Coy use the county offices for financial and political gain. He is still recording C4T videos and interviews in his office. Now he wants to bring the law team to Otero County that his daddy uses for Katrin County. Enough is enough. We deserve better. Raquel Morris.
All right, I think it's into the new business?
Oh, actually, we have Mr. Massey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Mike Massey. And I'm the new president of Timberon Airport Cooperative. But I'm here today to just, I want to thank everyone at the county for working through the recent, you know, recently, we were working with the state to get some grant money for the airport. And on July 21st, they sent a letter to the county that we wouldn't be eligible for grant money. Wanted to introduce you to the other four board members for the co-op. Michael B. Nicola, the vice president, is not here. He's a, he's learning to be a pilot. He owns property in Timberon on the runway. He is a professional truck driver by trade. And he, he's very concerned about Timberon community and wants to see it develop. Larry Crawford, who was here earlier, I think he, I think he had other business to attend to. But he's, he lives in Timberon, he's the most experienced pilot on the board. He is retired professional pilot. He's flown for fire services, flown turboprop airplanes, he's instrument rated commercial pilot, retired. Billy Shields lives in Timberon, he's our secretary treasurer. And he's retired military, he spent his career on aviation maintenance. And Don Pitts, who's a little under the weather right now, but he's the maintenance head for the board of directors. And he lives in Lovington, and he's a flight instructor. Between Larry and Don and I, we have probably over 100 years of aviation experience. These guys are fantastic advocates for the community. They're exactly the same board that's been in place for about the last, I guess, year or so. They weren't happy with the direction. They reached out to me, got me back involved, and so here I am. There, there are really three things, you know, this is open communication. There are three things I'm really concerned about. And I've discussed this with everyone before. You know, I'm concerned about that airport being useful and productive for the county and for the citizens of the area. I, I'm concerned about the debris, the trash and the junk vehicles that are pretty much all over Timberon right now. And we're gonna have a citizens committee to address that in a group format. We're putting that together right now. And the other thing is, I want to help to work with the state and with the county to rebuild that dam at the Sacramento Lake. And that was a fantastic lake for years. Some state engineering people thought it might be dangerous if that, if the dam collapsed. And so the, so they, you know, they drained the, the lake, and it's been that way for, I guess, 15 years now. But that was a fantastic resource for the county and for this desert area. And in working through this, reading the contract between the co-op and the county, and working with these individuals, the more people I get to know up here, the better I like this place. I love this desert mountain area. Pamela did everything she could to work with the state to get that funding. It was, it was on a timetable, it looked like some of our information wasn't good. I don't know all the reasons why the state has deemed that airport ineligible for funding. They cited problems with the contract between the co-op and the county. I recently read that contract and I saw what I thought were some things that were problematic as well. But we need, in the near term, we need some fencing, some security fencing out at the airport. And I'm hoping that somehow we can work some of that into this year's budget. And I'll be back on the next commission agenda, I'm asking for a place on the agenda, to make a presentation to you guys for the next two years. And hopefully, we can get that runway so that it's usable and get it more secure and do the things that need to be done so that can become an asset for the county. I really, after getting to know Pamela a little bit, I'm very impressed with her. You know, I've gotten emails from her from very early in the morning that I didn't read until she was well into her day. You're lucky to have her. I didn't, I didn't know her well, and I still don't know her very well, but I appreciate your help. I think you're very professional, and I find no fault. Everybody that I've really dealt with, with the exception of a couple of folks, their heart and their head seem to be headed in the right direction. And, and I want to say one other quick thing, Coy, I hope you can weather this little storm. You know, a lot of times, I agree with liberal ideology to a point, but I hardly ever agree with their solution to the problem. And in our lifetime, I haven't seen much success. We deleted our prison systems, we don't punish criminals. You know, we got problems tonight, and I appreciate conservatives.
Our time's up, Mike.
Okay.
That'll get you kicked out right there.
Yeah. It is. But I'm ready to go.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate you.
Thank you all.
All right, that's gonna bring us to the new business, this time on item 17. I'd like to group item 17 and item 23, they're on the same subject. We have a presentation which will bring both of them together.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item number 21. And so Julianne's not, she's gone, huh?
She's on national guard duty, she'll be back next meeting.
Well, I'd like her here for the next meeting because I want to pull item number 19 off and put it back on on the next meeting, and I'd like for Julianne to make sure that she's here for that.
You got it.
Thank you. So yeah, just pull 19 and, and 21, Gerald.
All right, so that's gonna bring us to item 17. It's to request approval for design plan process for the Laloos Gate Road in the amount of $361,138.94. This, this item was submitted by myself. I was approached, the Chamber of Commerce had a representative coming in to myself and then Brian Caesar from the city for DOT grant money, DOD grant money, make sure I get that right. And what they're wanting to do, the bases around are wanting to give grant money for improvement to accesses, things that would benefit the bases. So the one thing that I could think of the most on this was the Laloos Gate Road. That is a county maintained road. That road is nine miles long. Kind of what they've kind of estimated is about a $9 million job. But they, by the time I found out about it, I got hold of Tom, we got hold of Wilson and Wilson trying to, we didn't have enough time to put together a proposal, a nice, good, complete, professional looking proposal. So that's what we're trying to do now to be ready to turn in for next year. So at this time, I'll let Tom and he has brought Eric from Wilson and Wilson with him, so they can kind of go through a little bit more on this and give you some more details.
On the, the road, would that be right up to Ravens out there to their?
All the way up to the Laloos Gate.
Okay.
To the Holloman Gate. Because this is also the Holloman's secondary, why it's important to him, it's a secondary. There are only other exit, there's secondary emergency exit off the base.
But it's not open right now to through traffic though, is it?
Yes.
Oh, is it? I thought they had, I thought they closed it.
Close it during off hours for Mason, for the base, basically.
Okay.
What it is, they open, I think, I don't, to be honest, from like six to eight, and then from two to five, I believe it is.
Okay.
And once that, once Mesa Verde is closed, then the gate going back there is closed.
I got you. Okay.
So we have major support from the commander. If you've driven out on this road lately, it's in dire need of repair. So this would be, it would be a plus to Holloman, and I think it would be a big plus, money saver to Otero County if we could get that redone, because that road is gonna have to be redone before very long.
What about the traffic on that road, Tom? I mean, have we, do we have any data as far as how much traffic is on that road? And, I mean, I'm just thinking as far as spending the money.
Item 23 is that?
Yeah.
The traffic.
Okay, okay.
And he's gonna present that right now here too.
So, okay.
Sheriff, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dirk Hamilton, Wilson and Company. Just as for Mr. Chairman's comment about providing a competitive application for this grant funding source, one of the eligibility requirements is it has to be shovel ready. So this year's projects and the timeline terminated in mid-July. So this task order before you is to do all the planning design, full contract documents to position the county to submit a funding application for the construction. The amount, as Mr. Chairman mentioned, $9 million construction cost. The professional services could look, you can calculate in terms of a fee schedule that represents approximately 4% of an estimated construction cost. That is lower than our typical fee schedule. And when you relate it to other roadway projects similar to Alamo Road, this corridor in the nature of the design is not as complex, so that fee schedule goes down. So that $360,000, roughly 4% of an estimated construction total to be completed prior to next year's funding cycle termination date.
So with doing that, like I said, again, I didn't want to go up there with a piece of paper that looked like this and say, "Here's our proposal." So my understanding from the conversations and communication I've had with the commander and the other, the person that represented us there at the chamber was, this is an every-year deal. So it will be into effect. And you all have done these before, correct?
I personally haven't worked on one, so I don't want to speak for the company in that nature, but I would have to get back to you, Mr. Chair, and see if my manager Mario has, has done some in the past.
Because I thought that Mario had said.
Mario has.
Yeah. So with, through the company, we've got the experience in being able to present a proposal to them that could very well be very attractive to them in a professional package. This is also, my understanding, it is also a owner 10% participation? So if it's $9 million, we'll have to put in $900,000. This $360,000 here would apply to that 10%. So the other, we have to come up with wherever comes through on the packages. The, Tom, I'll let you kind of do a little briefing on what is gonna have to come up in the road repair. I don't know if you know what that might cost.
Well, and as I spoke with you the other day, we're to the point now that that road's degrading, especially with all this wet weather. We're gonna have to go out there this fall, as soon as it dries up. We're gonna have to do some emergency patching on it. We're probably looking this year alone, probably spending close to $40,000 just to go out there and patch what we're gonna have to patch. So that road does not completely disintegrate.
There shouldn't be anybody in the county that knows the roads any better than you do. So in saying that, as far as traffic and usage and, and demand or need for repair, would you say, are there, would you say this is number one top, because this is a lot of money we're looking at spending on that?
We're looking at a lot of money, and one way or the other, I don't, if we don't patch this year, and even if I do patch this year, we're looking at within the next two to three years, basically going in with the chip seal, granted, chip seal's a lot cheaper. But to hold up to that truck traffic that this road's taking and the traffic going into base, another wet year like this, we'd probably only gain five years out of it.
And we know that the truck traffic is coming from Mesa Verde.
Well, you're getting both. You're getting truck traffic going all the way into base.
Yeah, but Mesa Verde pounds that road. So, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking taxpayers and residents. And, you know, I mean, does, would Mesa Verde have any stake? And, because I know that they had, they pitched in on the road from traffic light to Laloos, correct? No, they didn't.
That was all grant money.
But, you know, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I know, we have, we have roads in this county that are beat to pieces that we have residents that drive little cars on that need to be fixed. But yet, we're looking at the road going into Mesa Verde out there that is beat to death by their big heavy trucks. And then we're looking at a $360,000 tab to go pretty much fix a road that goes into Mesa Verde, you know, I mean.
Not arguing. But out of the six point, I think it's 6.1 miles?
Yeah, that's what I had measured up to the.
6.1 miles, three miles of that is strictly, well, I won't say strictly, is residential.
Yeah.
Yes, Mesa Verde does travel that, that three miles too. But so does all the residents that live on that three miles of.
Yeah, and there's no doubt that that road is beat to, it doesn't, I mean, the shoulders eat up from inside the white line on it, and it's, it's extremely rough. But again, you know, I, yeah, I.
You, you still have a large account of people driving out there every morning, every night, going back and forth to work, which is a county maintained road. As a contractor going to the landfill, the, one of the biggest problems with that road when you're pulling dump trailers and stuff out there, the road's this wide, next month, the road's this wide, and then it keeps getting smaller, you're gonna have an accident before long, and it's gonna be because the county is not maintaining the road.
The vehicle count on that road was right at 1,600 vehicles per day. That, that's a lot more than just Mesa Verde traffic.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I understand that. But I also understand that there's other roads inside this county that are.
I agree.
Nobody knows better than you that are beat to deaths too, that don't just go into Mesa Verde's, but might go into, they might have a lot more traffic, residential traffic on it.
I agree. But I have one that DOD is willing to shell out the majority of the funding that is a major traffic route through the county.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just add a clarifying note in terms of the match. I'm gonna go ahead and read, that came from the Notice of Funding Opportunity. Proposed projects in rural areas including city, town, or unincorporated area that have a population of not more than 100,000 inhabitants will not be required to provide a match funding.
Oh, really? Well, there's a plus.
Ding ding ding.
Well, yeah.
I like that answer.
Thank you. So the, one of the biggest deal, like, trying to pump this road right now is the savings to the county in the future on a major road repair. Granted, yes, there are many roads in Otero County, there's many roads in the state of New Mexico. We're not just talking about Otero County that needs dire repair.
Sure.
But here's one that you can get paid for to get fixed.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's not a match and there's not, yeah, you know, I mean, who doesn't, who doesn't want a free road? You know, I mean, and, and there are, there are residences out there that, you know, I mean, there are a lot of people that live down that road, and it is, it is sketchy. But there are a lot of sketchy roads inside the county too, I know. But yeah, I mean, if we can get the DOD to step, to step up and make this big investment, and then it's just gonna save us in the future? Yes, Gerald?
My question is that.
If you can state your name, just for the record.
My name is Leanne Nichols. It states there, design slash plan. So is that just to design the road, or is it to also build the road?
No, ma'am, that, that is a design fee that Wilson and Wilson, this company right here, they'll have to do, it'll be full set of design plans, the whole contract package. The whole thing will be set up, and then they, at that part, to get it all through, and then they'll write up the package to go to the commander at, through the Holloman Air Force.
But the $361,000, is that a check that the county's gonna write? No. Or did you say that it's?
Yes, for right now.
For right now.
We need the engineering so we can have a complete package turned over to the DOD.
Oh, I thought you said, what did you say just a second ago?
So in terms of the funding opportunity, it funds projects that are shovel ready. So you can't even apply for this grant opportunity unless you have a contract, plans and designs prepared.
Yes, sir.
So part of it would be an investment on the county to fund the planning, design permitting. And then if funded, you would get 100% grant.
Okay.
Would that $360,000 re, come back to us on that?
So considering that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
That'll be the county's, that's gonna be on the county for that part?
Yes, sir.
With no reimbursement?
Yes, sir. Since it is 100% grant, if it was a 10% or 50% match component, you could use that prior investment for your engineering to satisfy a portion of your match component. But in this case, since it's a 100% grant, this design fee would just be your contribution to apply for that funding and, and secure the 100% grant money.
Still a lot cheaper than. And I'm coming up with.
Commissioner, Sheriff Black did call and I have him on the phone. He's had some questions about the steadier traffic out on the gateway.
That traffic guide. Did that break out the trucks and the vehicles too?
Mr. Chairman, no, this was just related to the speed. I do have that data, it's just not in this report. But I know offhand, like Mr. Tom Porter suggested, 1,650 vehicles average daily traffic for that roadway. But this report is specifically to address the excessive speeding.
Yeah. So in this, for the grant, item 17, could, how could you address the speeding on this road to, is there a way that we can address putting in a speed, some cut codes?
Like the speeding countermeasure, yes. And I've had that discussion with Mr. Tom Porter in terms of the investment to do before an actual full roadway reconstruction. And that was one of my countermeasures, is just to simply do some restriping to delineate the lanes and then signing for speed limit zones and advisory signings that vehicles approaching a reduced speed limit as an interim. A full reconstruction would look at an alignment study, a corridor and the typical section to mitigate those excessive speedings. So there are several future countermeasures that can be implemented with a full. So there are several future countermeasures that can be implemented with a full reconstruction or full design package. The recommendations out of this report are for your existing roadway.
So you're talking about like a safety corridor where they rip your lips off if you get caught speeding in them?
Well, no, not, not so much in terms of an enforcement violation, but just as, as a standpoint from the design. What can we do to reduce speeds as a design element? And through education and enforcement would be a secondary component to reduce the excessive speeding that we noted.
Well, I'm all for making that road safer for the residents that live out there because I know that it's getting eaten up and it needs attention. But I'm not all for this price tag on this, on this study and, and, you know, I, I, yeah, I think there's other, I think there's probably other roads inside the county that would better, you know, I just, yeah, I just struck, that's a lot of money, $360,000.
Think of the savings.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. I don't know, it's hard, it's going to be hard to make a decision, it's going to be hard to, for me to make a vote on it right now without getting some more community feedback on it and, and putting a little bit more time and thought into it. I don't know.
If I could, just 361,000, so for this next year, 2022's chip seal season, that's roughly what I got from, from the state just for next year's chip seal season. But that's only 12 miles of road. So we're looking at 360,000 for a road that's going to be brought up basically to highway spec, just like we did Alamo Street. And if we can get the rest of the money from DOD, I think it's a great investment.
Yes, ma'am.
Leanne Nichols, Dan Mike's one, does this go out for bid?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this.
The project, rough estimate, when this project's ready to go out to bid, will be roughly $9 million.
But I meant the engineering.
The engineering, we have Wilson on contract for that.
And is that something, I mean, I hate to say it right in front of Representative Wilson, but, you know, I mean, wouldn't that be a smarter, a more smarter move from the county to possibly put this up for bid instead of just, you know, I mean, I mean, I know it's your, I know it's your work and all, but it's a heck of a lot of money and usually whenever these jobs consist of this, this, it usually goes up for bid, right?
Not on the design, because you have a design staff already to contract with the county.
Probably already went out for bid on that, on that service.
Yeah. Now, when the road construction goes out, it'll go up to bid.
But we don't even have any, that's all being paid for by the DOD.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to support Commissioner Griffin's comment there, in terms of being fair in procurement, just one thing to note is professional services, you can't solicit actual quotations, it's based on qualifications. But you can certainly put this out for a request for proposal and then get several proposals from interested professional service providers. And that, that is similar to the on-call request for proposals that was done last year and issued this year.
So in a timeframe, if this was approved today, what is your timeframe to getting a proposal put together for us to submit to DOD?
So our, our schedule would be following the funding application cycle. The, the long lead items such as environmental permitting, the federal permitting, we'd schedule upfront. But all, all of the design phases, 30, 60, 90, and then final plans and specifications and estimate would be done before next year's application termination date, which is approximately July 16th, 2022. So we program it, to answer your question, we program the full schedule to be done within 10 and a half to 11 months.
We're 11 months out from this, if they do the same approximate date as they did?
Yes.
I wonder if we could reach out to Mesa Verde and see if they, you know, wanted to help out with some of this tab right here, since most of the truck, most of the heavy truck traffic that's going to be on it will be Mesa Verde. I mean, is that, do y'all ever, do you ever do anything like that, Pamela, or no? Yes, Sheriff.
Doesn't Mesa Verde pay extra taxes for their heavy trucks?
Highway taxes. Any other discussion? Trey, you're standing back there, you have any comment? Commissioner Markmore?
Well, I mean, that, that 360, 361,000 is a lot of money, but compared to $9 million, if we're going to, we certainly couldn't go in there and fix this road ourselves for 361,000.
And that would be something that would have to come out of general funding, correct?
How would you, him find a place to take it from?
I mean, I understand it's a lot of money. I just see it as a money saver in, in a year or two years, as a major money saver. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry.
It's okay.
I have another question. So I would just assume that their 361 would already be in the budget if you're here asking the commission for approval?
This came in after our budget deal? If we waited till the next budget season, then it would be two years from now. And the possibility that 360 could probably be 460 and it'd be 11 million.
Wouldn't you have to approve as a commission to find the 361 and approve it in the budget before you actually approved the contract? You wouldn't have to do that, no?
No, the only thing they do is vote on the item and direct staff to locate the funds in the budget. Now, if Finance Director comes back and says we can't have it, we can't locate it, we don't have the funds, then it's a different story. That she would make a budget adjustment, then come back to the board at a future meeting, allocating those funds for this project. So they would be, they would be given direction on where it was taken from the later meeting.
But they wouldn't be able to start until it was budgeted?
Correct.
Yeah, so it needs to come back.
And it's kind of a, if it's, if it's going to take him 11 months to design this, time is kind of an essence on this right now.
But he can't even start until it's budgeted.
If we approve this, and I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, if we approve this, it will go to the financial to see if it's a possibility. If it's not, right off, she's going to say no, and then we'll say no. It gets passed down. Yes, sir.
I agree that wouldn't hurt to reach out to Mesa Verde because after all, that is what they do. And they asked you to suggest it on engineering.
Mesa Verde, looking at it from a contractor's point of view, if, if Mesa Verde contributed money to this and then wanted to come in on the bid, that would be a conflict of interest, I would almost think.
Correct, they couldn't bid on the project.
Right. And they were standing to make way more money on the project than they would be.
They couldn't donate material?
Uh, I don't know. I, I, I really don't know. They didn't come in, jump out and do any volunteer on the Laloos, the Alamo Street road that goes right to their pit. So I, I, I don't know, that would be, I don't know how that would work. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
So this will be on item 17. Make a motion, request approval to design, plan, process for the Laloos Gate Road in the amount of $361,138.94. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
No.
Now, on discussion of item 23. There was a, this is strictly a discussed item. Is there any other discussion on the findings of the road speed limit study?
I don't have any.
Mr. Markmore?
No, do you guys have anything, Tom, you?
No, I've spoken to Sheriff Black about this and he's actually making a stronger presence known out there on Laloos and he says it is making a difference. So I believe you all got the email. Some of the speeds are quite excessive.
Like 30 over.
Eric actually removed two of them when we were talking about them with Sheriff Black. He had one at 101 mile an hour speed on that road. So the gentleman that you and I were talking to was more than correct on what he was complaining about.
All right, so my understanding, this will have to go to Julianne, she will look at it before we can.
She can bring back at the second amendment if she locates the funds, a budget adjustment for you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, this will go to item 18. Discuss and consider holding a public hearing on Otero County's approach, position to any future COVID-19 mandates imposed on the state and the federal level.
Yeah, I had this item put on the agenda. You know, it looks like we're starting to move into this once again as far as the mandates that are going to be coming down from the state and possible mandates. And, you know, I think it would be good to have a public hearing just to try to get more feedback from the community as far as where they want us to stand on this, how, how they want us to represent them on it. Because I feel like whenever, whenever we went through it the first round, you know, we were kind of, we were kind of all over the place on it. But maybe through a public hearing, we can have a, we can get more of a clear, a clear message from the community. Because it, it's probably coming again, you know, and, and there's threats right now with mandated vaccines and such and, and, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think that we just really need to get community feedback. So I would suggest something similar possibly to what they had recently at the Flickinger. I think that would probably be a good place to have a hearing like this right across the street. And maybe we can have a, a motion drafted, which will, which we can vote on at the end of the hearing, maybe the same way, kind of like that Second Amendment Sanctuary County resolution. If we have a motion that's drafted, then we can, we can make a clear position at that time what, what the resolve of the county's going to be.
What was the outcome Sunday?
It was good, you know, it was informative. There was, I feel like it was too political. You know, it was, all of a sudden, it turned into, you know, had all the Republican legislators there and, and politics started kind of coming into play rather than it just being informative and just being solid community feedback. That, that's what I would, that's what I would rather see in maybe a hearing like this is just allow the, the community to be able to come in and voice their, either their support for or against the mandates. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's how we're, that's how we listen to our community is through, through that kind of interaction. I think it would be, I think it would, I, I think that it would give us, yeah, just clear understanding of, of what this county wants to do. If, if the people of the county want to, want to adopt the masks and people want to wear the masks, I, I'm not going to, but if the people, if the majority of people do want to, if the majority of people do want mandated vaccines, then, and I, and I get that very clear, clearly translated to me, then, you know, I'll vote for it. But, um. You want, you, yeah.
He said to hold on.
Oh, okay. No, yeah, just a second, we'll get to you.
And I don't have a problem sitting and having a public hearing. I would love to hear what the people of Otero, I would love to keep it a non-political deal. I, I want to hear what they.
Sure.
What they really want.
Sure.
I, I have, I have no problem having a meeting. I hope we could get some people to show up.
Oh, yeah, there will be. But I'd also like for us to draft a motion at the end of it, which will say, this is going to be, this is, and, and it could be a simple motion, you know, yes or no. We could have a yes or no vote if we're going to adapt, if we're going to adopt these state mandates and enforce them inside the county, or if we're going to allow the people of this county to have the freedom to be able to make those decisions themselves. It could be a very simple motion and, and I believe give the people of the county a very clear message that this is, this is, this is the ground we stand on. So, I mean, because that's what people need. People need to, people have got to have the, the confidence that we have their back, you know, that we support them. But we, we have to know what the people want first and then once we do, then, then, then we can move to support them.
And, and with that, I would really like our attorney, whether it be you or who, are you assigned to Otero County, is that?
Yes.
Or will you have somebody else?
Well, there's, I have seven lawyers in my, in my law firm, so I can't guarantee I'll be, I'll be the guy here every single time.
Okay. But it would be nice to have on the legal side who would come in to make sure that the citizens, when they come in, what is going to be the pros and cons from the legal side of it too.
Sure.
Just so everybody's in the, there's nobody standing there in the dark. Because the last time it came in, the county was standing up to a $130,000 fine from OSHA, which is a whole nother, different aspect from the state. Like I said, it's, I'm all for it. I just want to have all the information that we can, whichever way it's going to hit, either way.
I'd be happy, happy to work on that.
Perfect. Well, I wonder, can we, if, can we schedule maybe, maybe not this coming week, but maybe the following week? Like, can, how?
Well, we need, I need to make sure we check with Sylvia because we do have to advertise it 14 days in advance.
14 days?
And there's a lead time with the newspaper, so let's let Sylvia give us the earliest date.
Okay, that'd be just fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm just curious, Commissioner Griffin.
Yes, ma'am.
You're not going to follow the rules anyway. If you had the meeting and you got the feedback from the county constituents.
Yeah.
You're not, if they wanted to wear a mask and follow the rules and all that, you wouldn't follow it anyway. So what's the sense in having a meeting if you're us?
Um, you know, I don't know, I mean, I guess, yeah, I don't. I don't know, to get the community feedback. Who's to say what I'll do? Maybe I will, maybe I'll start wearing a mask.
With your T-shirt.
And my T-shirt, that's right.
So the soonest we could probably meet would be September 2nd.
September 2nd?
That's a Thursday. Just, I can't get anything to the paper. If I get it to them today, they won't do anything until tomorrow and I probably won't get approved until Monday.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that there's enough time there to not run into that problem.
That's the weekend, that's the weekend before Labor Day, right?
That would be the week, yeah.
I don't think I'll be here. I'll be in Colorado.
Yeah. So then our regular scheduled meeting is September ninth. I don't know if you wanna do Tuesday or do the following week after that.
Well, if we had our meeting on a Thursday and then had that Thursday evening, wouldn't that be fine?
Yeah, that would be great.
Let's just do that. We know people.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, you had a question.
I was wondering at this public forum, are there gonna be medical doctors there or veterinary medical doctors?
We'll see about that. And, you know, I hear your sarcasm, but, you know, I was there and I listened. Were you there at the...
I listened.
Yeah. You know, I mean, um... Yeah, I felt like he did a good job, Dr. Black, you know? I feel like he had a lot of research. He did a lot of research. Just because... Just because you've got your license in veterinary medicine doesn't mean you don't understand medicine, you know?
So is he going to treat COVID patients?
No, I don't know. We'll... You know, we'll figure out what this hearing's gonna look like between now and then.
Pamela, can we ask somebody from the hospital to come and...
We can ask whoever we want. You just let us know.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be good, you know? We can get some... We can reach out to some different doctors and we can get a well-rounded opinion. And the more well-rounded of an opinion, and then the people can come and they can listen to those opinions and then they can make their decisions themselves. That's what freedom looks like, you know? Instead of being forced into these mandates by only one opinion coming out of Santa Fe, you know? I mean, that's tyranny. That's fascism. So...
Any other discussion?
The only question I have is do we wanna do six o'clock or six-thirty?
Six.
Six.
It's gonna be a long deal.
Yeah.
Is there a roster for you?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing that would change that is if something's going on at the Flickinger. You'd have to check on that.
Right.
To make sure that it's open. No further discussion?
Nope.
Alright, that'll move us down. Item nineteen was pulled. Item twenty. Request approval letter to Almagordo City Commission as well as New Mexico NAACP to request rededicating Martin Luther King Drive to another city street.
Alright, this was another one that I've submitted on the agenda. Before we get to this agenda item though, I've got a question for Sylvia. Whenever I sent you this original agenda item...
Yes, sir.
I sent it to you where it read just like this one does right here, but when you sent me the draft agenda back, on our draft agenda, it said, "Request approval to submit a letter to the City of Almagordo in reference to the name change of Martin Luther King Drive." It's much different than what this agenda item reads. And I'm just asking you, why did you change the wording in it?
I believe that I took the wording right out of your email from the first one.
Okay. But not on the draft agenda?
And actually, now that you say that, I understand what you're saying is you... One, we've been working with changing the name going out towards the detention center.
Yeah.
And I thought that's what you were referring to, not to actually dedicate another street to Martin Luther King in the City of Almagordo. So I think I misunderstood where you were coming from because I thought we were still talking about the same...
Yes, ma'am.
Changing the name.
Yeah, no, I just...
From the detention center.
Yeah, that's the road at the detention center. And, yeah, no, I meant the agenda item to be on the agenda exactly the way I sent it to you because, you know, whenever you change it right here, I mean, yeah, I don't wanna just change the name of Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, but I wanna find a road that's much more suited to his legacy than the road that dead ends at the Otero County Detention Center. You know, I drove out there the other day and it boils my blood because Dr. Martin Luther King was one of the greatest civil rights leaders that has ever lived and he stood all the way to the end and gave his life for that, for his cause. And, you know, now, if that road out there to the detention center, if it was done... If that road was named maliciously or if it wasn't, who knows? We just have to maybe edge on the side of doubt and say it was just a mistake and they just, you know? But I feel like it would be good to... As Gerald had brought it up a few meetings ago, the fact that this road was named after Dr. Martin Luther King out there and brought it... Gerald is the one that brought it to the county's attention a couple months ago and I applauded him for it. Or not a couple months ago, it's probably been six, eight months ago now. But I just feel like... And it's not us that's gonna rename the road. It's just a letter that's just... I would like just a letter written to the Almagordo City Commission to bring it to the Almagordo City Commission that a dead-end road that dead ends at the Otero County Detention Center and that's the only address on Martin Luther King Drive is the Otero County Detention Center. I just think it's a slap in the face. I think the road needs to be moved. Wherever the city... Wherever Almagordo City, City of Almagordo wants to move that road to, will be entirely up to them. You know, Mesa Verde Drive out there where the cinema's at now and the bowling alley and the hotel and everything else that's been built with taxpayer money, maybe that would be a good road to name Martin Luther King Drive. I don't know. But I feel like it needs to be rededicated and I think that it'd be good to send a letter to the Almagordo City Commission but as well to the New Mexico NAACP. And that would just allow the NAACP to know that we recognize this and where our position is on it, you know?
Well, that road starts at Hamilton Road, goes to the railroad tracks and then extends.
That's right, I know.
So you want to redo the whole thing and not have that... I don't think there's any properties on that.
No, I... My... Whatever they want to rename that road, they can... They can re... I'm not talking about redoing the road. I'm just talking about finding another city street to name after Dr. Martin Luther King. One of the greatest Republican leaders in American history was Dr. Martin Luther King, you know? And I think it would be... I think it would be a good thing to do, you know? I mean, where the road is, I thought Mesa Verde Drive out here just because there's only a few businesses on that, maybe it wouldn't be quite as expensive to change because I know whenever you go to change in street names and stuff, I know there's gonna be a big expense to it, but at the same time, I think it'll be money well spent.
At the city right now, there's an organization that... Those are the ones who approached me on changing it. So it never got to come in to the city council because of the COVID deal. Now that that's released and over, right before Michael left, the city called him and asked him about, because my name was still on it...
Yeah.
If it was okay if the organization could do what they wanted to do.
What was... I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. What's the organization and who... What were they wanting to do again? Were they...
They were... I don't know exactly what the name of it is. Warren Robinson, that used to be with United Way. He was one of the big leaders of it. CHAS was helping him on it. And it's little... The National African American Group here in town is doing it. So I need to get back with the city or get back with Mr. Robinson and see... Cause it's sitting there on their board to do, on their planning street deal. Cause it's already been paid for and the whole nine yards, so... And they paid for it.
Okay. Were they gonna find another road to dedicate to Dr. Martin Luther King or were they just gonna change the name of that road?
They were just gonna change that. And I, when they asked me, I said, "I don't care what they changed it to, whatever they or who, they were wanting to just change that section of that street."
Change the section of that?
Yeah. And actually, if you know the truth on it, where Scenic comes around, I believe that's gonna turn in... If they ever finish that Martin Luther King, it'll go all the way up high to Scenic.
Yeah.
Could ever finally expand that far.
They got that road blocked off where you have to have permission to go on it. After they changed that, the people that live up there, the gates are off. You have... Were they gonna cut that road through and cut it down where it would be Martin Luther King Drive?
Would it come through that gated community?
Yeah. Now, after they started doing that, they got teed off and they put a gate up there and you have to have the code in order to go through it. You can't just go up there and go through the gate. You have to have somebody that lives up there give you a code and you'd get through that gate. So unless they changed that and they were talking about making that road all the way up and down through and that little piece down on Hamilton Road ended up as Martin Luther King. And that whole road was up here as Martin Luther King. But the building of the road got stopped.
Right. And I don't know where the city is on that part. That was an issue at the time, but I think they got by that issue. Where they're at with the city now, that was a big money deal, but the city was never... I don't think they were gonna have the money to do that. So that's what they're planning. They have a plan still to get that down and through there, so...
Or boards, still a lot and you have to give permission.
If you go through the... Through that subdivision.
But I still think, I mean, if y'all support it, I think it would still be good just to write a letter to the Almagordo City Commission as well as NAACP, just to request the rededicating of this street to another city street. And then it just shows our position as a board that we recognize that, you know...
And that's fine. Maybe they'll get this other group here in town to...
Absolutely.
Get it done.
Absolutely. Sometimes it just takes just a little bit of a nudge and maybe this'll just give them enough nudge to do it. Because it is, you know, I mean, I don't know, you know? I mean, if it was... What if it was Ronald Reagan Drive, you know? And you drive in here in Almagordo and the only address on Ronald Reagan Drive is the Otero County Detention Center out in the boonies, you know? I mean, I just don't agree with it. And again, I don't know if it was done with ill intent or maliciously, but I just feel like just a simple letter to them, just pointing it out and letting them know our position on it would be...
I know the road stopped right there at the interest of the detention center, but if you look on the whole plan, the layout, it ties into the highway.
Yeah.
Never got built.
Yeah.
And I think that will be built when they do the other part that ties into Scenic is the bypass to the bridge. Is where that, if I remember correctly, on that part of the plan.
Sure.
Alright, this is a discuss and consider.
No, it's request approval.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
I've got too many scribble marks here. Alright, we'll make a motion to request approval of a letter to the Almagordo City Commission as well as the New Mexico NAACP to request rededicating Martin Luther King Drive to another city street.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's gonna move us down to item twenty-two, correct?
Yeah.
Item twenty-two, request approval of Resolution oh-eight dash one-two dash two-one slash one-one-zero dash oh-two, affirming the resolute opposition to the promotion of race or sex stereotyping. Commissioner Markle?
I just felt like this was necessary. I feel like we're trying to go backwards instead of including everybody. And now they're wanting to go to divide us by races and stuff like that. I don't think that's right. And that's why I... That's what moved me to do this resolution.
Okay.
Who's trying to divide us by races?
Well, when you look into CRT and some of the new education stuff that's coming across...
Right. So CRT, that conversation came about when the California proposed the sixteen-nineteen project.
Correct.
What historically in that project do you oppose specifically?
The dividing of the races again. I think we've finally gotten to a place in America where we have finally started having racial equality. And I feel like this is a huge step backwards.
So what... But what historical content specifically in the sixteen-nineteen project are you opposing?
The critical race theory.
No, but what specific historical fact in the project do you not agree with?
I don't know what you want me to answer. My whole thing to this is I feel like it's moving our country backwards. I feel like it's dividing our kids to where they're gonna hate each other because of color of their skin and they're gonna hate their country. And that's exactly why I did this.
But none of that is in the sixteen-nineteen project, dividing people by race and stuff like that?
It's in CRT.
How so?
The school is separating the black children into a separate room and not getting them in the same room. That is what I heard on the news.
What school is doing that?
They haven't done it here yet, but they are doing it in some school districts. I think in Virginia and maybe Delaware.
They're separating schools by color?
They're separating classes by color. They were gonna put the white teachers with the white kids, the black teachers with the black kids. I don't think that's right. I don't think we're gonna ever grow as a country if we keep doing this.
So what curriculum... Like what historic... Because in sixteen-nineteen projects, they talk about, you know, share classing and conduct leasing and predatory lending. What about that rings untrue to you?
I don't think that we should be teaching everybody that one race is oppressive and one is the oppressor. And I think this all ties this all in together, this whole CRT project.
So one thing that you made about the Martin Luther King Drive is that it's a slap in the face.
Right.
The reason that it's a slap in the face is because people were incarcerated to legally reinflate. That happened.
To do what?
To legally reinflate. It's in the Constitution.
It's a slap in the face, not because anything that has to do with the color of Dr. Martin Luther King's skin. Don't be... Please don't be racist. The reason... Listen. The reason... Listen. The reason why it's a slap... Listen. The reason why it's a slap in the face is because Dr. Martin Luther King was one of the greatest civil rights leaders and the greatest Americans that ever lived regardless of the color of his skin.
Right, and he was still assassinated.
We don't stereotype him.
One of the hated men in the country when he was assassinated. The Thirteenth Amendment reads that neither slavery nor involuntary servitude except as punishment for crime where if the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or placed under their due instructions, which means that...
I can't hardly understand you with that mask on, I'm sorry. I can't even hear you.
Which means that incarceration was used to legally reinflate black Americans. This happened in our history and this is stuff that should be taught in schools.
No, the reason why Vicki, I believe, because I believe that I know Vicki's heart, I believe the reason why Vicki has this on our agenda is because she's sick of people being stereotyped. It says it right here, the race or sex stereotyping. We need to get away... See, that's where liberals hang out because they love to identify people by their sexual identity or by the color of their skin or by their ethnic background. And they like to keep everybody separated so they can cause all this drama and controversy between different people groups. What Vicki is, is Vicki is an American. Vicki believes in the American people and the American dream, just like Dr. Martin Luther King did, where we're all one, we're not all segregated and stereotyped. All critical race theory does is more just separate people and then victimize people through that separation. And then all of a sudden you have a little child that might be a little bit more lighter skin than he is darker skin and all of a sudden all the other little kids are calling... Are hatin' him because he's one of those racists. And that's what this critical race garbage does. And I support this resolution completely.
Thank you.
So it actually does say that critical... That race is a social construct. It's not actually something that exists. So critical race theory thinks that this says that the social construct that is the cause of the systemic issues that exist. It's like, it's saying exactly what you're saying, that race is not a thing. But because it's become a social construct, there's issues that have arisen as a result, and those issues are apparent across the board. When you look at medical discrepancies, incarceration discrepancies, housing discrepancies, all those things, they have discrepancies by race, unfortunately, because of the social construct that exists. So I agree that, right, you know, we need to get rid of the social construct that exists in terms of race. But that's what critical race theory is saying. So it seems like there's a misunderstanding of what critical race theory is and what the ultimate goal of it is. And it's also collegiate level philosophy. It's not really something that's studied in schools. And so that's kind of why I was asking, what specifically in the sixteen nineteen project, historically, are you saying did not happen or is untrue?
Well, what are you saying in it that's beneficial to the kids of today?
It shows that there are steps that need to be made to remedy these discrepancies that exist within our country. Because, because there are discrepancies, I mean, they're there, and they need to be eliminated. So I just think there's a misunderstanding about what, I think it's been sensationalized, and there's a misunderstanding about the whole, of what the goal of critical race theory is. And one thing that I wanted, like, in that resolution, there's a lot of information about, you know, we're all created equally and, you know, race is not a thing, and I agree with that. But it's a little bit hard when we have a commissioner that waves a Confederate flag. And the Confederacy, the cornerstone of the Confederacy states over and over again that the white race is superior to the black race. That is stated over and over again. So it's a little bit hypocritical when there's somebody on the commission that waves a Confederate flag.
And I'll tell you something, that Confederate flag, the only time that I got that out was whenever I was in the South. But the, but it doesn't, but listen, it's not, it's not, to me, the flag isn't a symbol of racism. To me, it's a Dixie flag, it's, it's Dukes of Hazzard, it represents the South. And the, but listen to me if you can, the only, the only reason why I flew that, that flag down there was, was just to honor the South, and the only, and the only, the only thing that allowed me to fly that flag is because I'm not a racist. And whenever, listen, whenever I got that flag out too, and I saw the response of some, some of those younger black kids, whenever they saw that flag and I could see it on their face that it offended them, I wouldn't put the flag up. Because it's the last thing I want to do is offend, offend anybody. But if I was a racist, I wouldn't have been, I wouldn't have flown that flag. I mean, I'm not a racist, I'm sorry. My great grandmother was full blood, she was from Chihuahua, Mexico, you know?
Do you agree with the content of the cornerstone speech of the Confederacy?
What is it?
Do you agree with the content of the cornerstone speech of the Confederacy?
I don't even know, I don't even, I'm not familiar, I'm not.
The fact that you don't know the content is a big problem. We should have caught that in.
Well, no, maybe the problem would be if I did know the content of it, and maybe if I was still flying it, I don't know, you know? But again, like I said, to me, to me, it just, it's a Dixie flag, it's a part of the history of the South, you know? And it was a big part of the South. It's not a racist, to me, the Dixie flag isn't a racist symbol.
Okay, I'll just say that I believe your intent is good. I do, I do believe that Vicki, I believe the intent is good, but I think that there's a misunderstanding about what the ultimate goal of critical race theory is and, and the level that it's targeted, so that's all I'll say about that.
Okay, well, we'll agree to disagree on that, but, okay, do we want to move this forward?
Yeah.
Starving.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry about raising my voice a minute ago, too.
Yeah, I'm, I just had the, I'm passionate about it because I have read quite a bit of Black history.
Yes, ma'am.
I think there's a lot that we don't know and you're not taught in schools that we should be taught in schools.
And I think the only way that we're going to ever be progressive is by looking to the future and loving one another and loving our country and loving our flag, not living in the dumpster of yesterday. We remember what happened in yesterday, but we don't, we let, we don't live there. We let it guide us to the future. We try to, we try to, try to do what was good, we try to do it again, and what was bad, we try not to do it again. That's, that's how our, our history can move us forward. Sorry, sorry, Gerald.
All right, we'll make a motion to request approval of resolution number oh-eight dash one-two dash two-one backslash one-one-zero slash oh-two, affirming the resolute, resolute opposition to the promotion of race or sex stereotyping. Can I get a second on this?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, we've already done item twenty-three, so this is going to take us to the commission discussion. What we've been doing, I've been going every month down to Chaparral. They're having their city council meeting. Right now, their big issues are EMS services and the deputy services. So last, last, well, it was the second of August, we were down, they had a pretty good turnout. They had a lot of Donna Anna people there, they had a lot of Otero there. So there were some good items brought up, and they, and the Donna Anna, like I asked Matt earlier, the Donna Anna Fire Chief and Matt talked for a long time afterwards, and they've got some good ideas coming up, which is going to be, I believe will be beneficial to Chaparral if they can just get them all worked out. We listened to Tom and Eric from Wilson and Wilson. I've been working on that little project, trying to get that going. I just got an email a day or two ago, the Mexican Wolf Study Committee is fixing to start back up. It'll be August nineteenth. I listened last week on the, the meeting at the detention center with White Sands, the architect. Sounds like that project is kind of about faced and turned and running the other way, so that's a good thing. Sounds like they've got everything kind of worked out, they're catching up on time. They were actually getting things done before they were even supposed to be done, so. I've had several complaints lately about dilapidated buildings, trailer houses. Chaparral's loaded with them, all of Otero County is. I've been, when I get them, I turn them over to Mr. Farmer, and you'd be surprised at how many of them are already waiting for court cases. And that's a sad thing, because there's nothing we can really do about them until they go to court. Whether they are fine, they either have to clean them up, tear them down, remove it, or they don't have to do anything. So.
I talked to Ralph out at the Solid Waste about that, and he said to take a full-size mobile home, you have to tear it down. It has to be cut up into pieces and stuff before they'll take it. But they take small campers and stuff like that.
Yeah, it, there's a pretty good little process to go through. Anything that's older, if you're going to go turn it in, then it has to have an abatement, asbestos abatement checked. So it's a pricey little thing to get done. In Chaparral, the, we had paperwork drawn up on two different properties that were stacking cars. It was like, it was a car salvage yard. One of them has agreed to make the changes, do whatever they have to do, and they are in doing it. The other one won't even respond back to us. So that one's going to go to court for sure, and I mean, it's in the process already, so. It's a long drawn out deal, but the, the cleanup in Otero County, Chaparral is trying to get an organization going. We already have, Almagordo has a deal trying to get the cleanup going. So it's a countywide problem, everybody realizes it. And the nice thing about it is the community is starting to step in to help do this. So that's about all I've been doing for the last month.
Well, I, I want to say, Gerald, that it's nice having you sitting back over here in between us. But, yeah, I, I went to the meeting the other day, as I mentioned, on Sunday across the street at the Flickinger, and, and heard a lot of the, a lot of the responses from, from legislators about, you know, what, what they're fighting for. And many of them, Jim and Evette and others, they, they stand on good ground and they fight good fights. But as I mentioned in the meeting, I, I truly believe that, you know, the battle's going to be won on the very local level, you know? I mean, unfortunately, that is in the minority in the US side, and Jim's in the minority on the state side. I mean, and whenever you have a minority in there, it's, it's harder to get stuff through. But, but I feel like, you know, that the, the local, on the local levels of government, if it's on the city, the village, the county, the school board, those are where we can really hold a line and, and, and support our constituents. I don't know if Judy, has Judy Rabin, has she weighed in yet on her vote on the school board yet?
Not going to know.
So there's a split vote right now on the Almagordo School Board, where there's two, two school board members that have voted to adopt the, the state mandates, and there's two school board members that voted against it, and there's Judy Rabin, has yet to, has yet to vote. I would encourage any parent out there that's concerned to call Judy, write Judy an email, and voice what you would like Judy to do. I mean, that's, that's how our government should work. You know, it's nice having the recall committee here in the front row today, thanks for the shirt, by the way. But, you know, and some of the allegations that the recall committee has against me, and some of the message that's been put out in the community about such thing as, as, as taking advantage of county resources. I want y'all to know that, you know, to date, I've spent three hundred and ninety-seven dollars since I've been in this office. You don't have to look at me sarcastically, ma'am. Susan Flores, whenever she sat in this office during her tenure, spent eight thousand six hundred dollars in this office. I've also been accused of calling in to county commission meetings, in which I know that some of y'all have been telling people, but, you know, I've called in to a total of four meetings, and two of those meetings were forced because of the quarantine, the coronavirus quarantine, so legally, or really technically, only called into two. And Susan Flores called into eight meetings whenever she was in this office. So for y'all to, to use those points against me in this recall, it's, it's really not fair. And then the travel voucher, whenever I went to Washington DC, that travel voucher was issued by the county under the county's advisement, we've already been through all of that. So, you know, I, I know that you might not like the way I, I say things maybe, and you might not like me personally, but I'll tell you, just like I've told everybody, I try to do my best job, I try to do as good of a job as I can. And, and, you know, I mean, if you get the signatures, I guess you get the signatures and we'll go from there. But it's really unfortunate that you had that hearing, that state hearing on a, on a day whenever I couldn't even be there to, to just give a brief defense of myself like I just did for you now. But I hope it clears up a little bit. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for the shirt. And I want you to know too, that, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to be focused on all the people that signed the recall petition, because I really don't even want to know who the people are that signed it, because I don't want it to influence the way I represent the people of the county later on. So that's my two cents.
Commissioner Mark.
Okay, since the last meeting, I, I met with Lori Anderson from Otdeck, talking about the Cookie Factory, possibly having somebody else come in there. And I met with Mike Massey, talked to him about the Timbuktu Airport. I attended a Zoom meeting about the new liquor license changes, which have been quite a bit in the state. I met with Tom Porter, we went out and looked at some roads, and went to the Walker Roads, Road Dedication out on Riada Road. And I attended the Balloon and Music Festival meeting at the Chamber. And then the other day, I attended the Hundred Women Who Care, and we donated some money to the Tiger Band Booster. They're the ones that got our, our money this time, so that's what I've been up to.
All right, our county manager?
Commissioner, I apologize, I cannot speak unexpectedly, had to stay home, only found that I could come to work this morning at eight-thirty AM. So I am not prepared for my report, but I do want to direct the report to Mr. Springer, who has brought to my attention a possible cannabis ordinance. In talking with my other managers in the state.
For Talis.
There are other counties that are putting ordinances in place for regulations and some different things that Mr. Springer can explain. So my, my question when he gets done is if he would like to bring you an ordinance in September for consideration.
I wouldn't mind looking at whatever we have.
Yeah, possibly. It just, you know, I mean, it would, yeah, it probably just can, just depend on what the, what the mate of the ordinance would be, you know? I mean, my, yeah.
May I?
Yes, sir.
If you have a, I, there's a lot to unpack when it comes to recreational cannabis. I mean, it's, we could talk for hours, but I have been working with some other counties. I know some municipalities are enacting ordinances. When the Act, the Cannabis Regulation Act passed, it was effective in the summer, June twenty-nine. After that, RLD, who's going to be issuing regulations for everyone to follow, issued a letter and went to, I thought it went to all local governments, but I could be wrong. That essentially is kind of encouraging local governments to take action sooner than later. The reason being, application dates begin soon. Producers, the cultivators and the growers who can do up to ten thousand plants can apply starting September one. And that application process is not supposed to take longer than ninety days, according to the rules as they are written now. We still don't have regulations yet from RLD to give us more guidance on what your, the scope of local regulation could be. But we know that application date is, it's on the books as of now. And then retailers, I'm sorry, it was producers and micro businesses actually can begin applying for the licensure September one. The retailers in the cannabis consumption areas, like where you would go hang out, you know, and use the cannabis, they can apply, I think it's starting January one, twenty-twenty-two. So here's the catch, though. And I don't have an agenda either way, I'm just giving you the information. I, I don't, it doesn't make any difference to me what you decide to do, no ordinance. But here's the catch, if you, if you haven't gotten an ordinance in place, by the time a licensee gets his permit and begins operating, there'll be a vested interest and they'll be grandfathered in. I don't know how much of an impact, you, of course, you know your county much better than I in the layout and everything, but think about it in terms of a municipality or someone has, already has citywide zoning. If you didn't get an ordinance in place to say, okay, we want the, the producers and the cultivators will be in the rural regions, where the farmers and the ranching is, and then we have an entertainment district, so we can have our retail there. It's, it's zoning essentially is one, one of the options. And I have to double check, I know the county has a comprehensive plan. Do you have designated transects or areas, is it zoned?
There's no zoning on that.
Are different areas actually identified by G I S mapping? Okay, we can look at that, but, so there's a lot to talk about, but that's the idea of why it seems to have some urgency. The truth is, no one really knows what those regulations are going to look like. There's some published versions, drafts, but the finals are not out yet. And also, you know, how it's all really going to happen. We can't really look to Colorado or Arizona too much, because our laws is different, the scheme and the setup is different. But I think you, as commissioners, should, should know that you have an option for what they're called local control. And what that is, you can enact, enact an ordinance that allows for time, place, and manner regulations, like density, things like that. You are prohibited from completely, completely prohibiting a licensee from, from operating. But, so let me give you some ideas to put into context of something we're working on with some of our other, our other clients. I mean, when you're talking about the cannabis industry, you have to think about the whole thing. You've got this idea of a consumption area, which I would say is sort of like a bar. That's where you go and hang out, and you can buy it, and you can hang out there and smoke or do whatever you need to do. There's, there's going to be laboratories, there's going to be. There's, there's gonna be laboratories, there's gonna be manufacturers, there's gonna be cultivators, there's gonna be, um, processes where they extract the oils out, as opposed to just growing the plant and rolling it up, you know? There's gonna be the vape stuff, um, there's gonna be micro businesses where they grow up to 200 plants on site, and then they process in-house, and then they have a storefront where they sell their own product. You know, you were mentioning you're going up to Colorado, Commissioner, you probably will see those, those big warehouses and buildings with the huge signs, like, that might be a micro business, you know? The products are gonna be, the, the plant itself, you know, that you can smoke, it's gonna be in vape form, there's gonna be edibles, and they're all, there's, there're gonna be regulations on the strength and things like that, but in your mind, if you don't have much experience in it, that's what a cannabis retailer looks like. You've got all these options for all different flavors and anything you can really think of, cookies and sodas and, um, that would be called like a cannabis product. So just to give you an idea of what you're thinking, it's like the starting all the way to the finish point, so, producers, right now, it looks like they're gonna be able to have up to 10,000 plants, um, micro businesses up to 200, and then personal use, every person has a right to grow at his own, on his own property, for personal use, six plants unless you're, uh, married, then you can have up to 12. So that's a whole different, uh, thing to think about. So, let me just kinda, I'll, I'll run through these real quick. So I mentioned the zoning. It's much easier for a municipality that already has a comprehensive plan with zoned sections, this is our industrial area, this is our rural area, this is our urban area. If the county's comprehensive plan doesn't specifically designate which areas are which, uh, for example, in Grant County, they have identified transects, they call them transects, so they've got their rural, uh, they've got, you know, kind of a quasi-urban, residential, so that's something you can rely on when it comes to zoning, could planning ahead is when you wanna actually zone an area of your county, that's something that you need to have in place before you can zone. Uh, but we'll have to look at it more carefully for your options in Grant County. It doesn't mean it's not possible, it just means it might require some of that high-tech engineering, G I S kind of mapping, so to speak. So zone, that's, zoning's an option. This type of business can only be here, this type of business can only be here. But you can only, you can change it, but once you change it, you can't, it's good to get in place ahead of time as land use planning, is my, is my point. So consider that, um, think about indoor, odor, think about odor. Uh, a lot of comments on odor, the plants smell, uh, like skunk, you know, typically is what people say, but we have a lot of them, like that odor can carry great distances. Um, if you, if you're growing on your own property at home, you're gonna have odor from your plants and however you have them, so your neighbors, you, you know, there's a lot to think about with odor. There's high-tech filtration requirements that you can have for indoor facilities, that have like carbon filters to reduce odors, um, but it has the potential to, to really, if someone had a large enough grow in a, in a residential area, you would probably be able to smell it throughout the neighborhood, so to speak.
And smoking it in public and public-
That's a, that's another one, Commissioner Griffin, smoking in public places, that can be, that could be prohibited.
Yeah.
Certainly can, and then these are things you gotta think about. Then you've got cannabis consumption areas, which I likened to bars earlier, right? So where should they be? What hours of operation should they have? And then, you know, what, what does that look like, that business? You've also got, um, a requirement that, RLD said that, that local governments, they said that they, they must adopt a requirement of a distance from schools and daycares for cannabis establishments. But when I read the law, I don't, I didn't see that that was a requirement to actually adopt that, but I get what they're saying, I think they're really encouraging it, but here's the rule on that, you can be, uh, you can restrict the distance of a cannabis establishment from a school or daycare, but no greater than 300 feet. So it's from zero to 300 if you wanted to set that, that type of a minimum distance, but can be no greater than 300. They're really encouraging, uh, the local governments to act on that, but again, it didn't look like a requirement to me in the law that I read, but I, I'll double check. Just another thing, again, hours of operation, um, some people say like, well, what's the rationale behind that? And it's like, well, it's an intoxicating substance, you know, you would think that a bar has to close, but maybe it doesn't, you know, and, um, that's not my call to make, but, or why you can't buy, uh, alcohol on Sunday mornings, but you can, if you go to lunch and have a restaurant there, you can drink, I don't know the rationale behind all that stuff, but similarly with cannabis, says it's intoxicating substance, you may wanna think about, are these should be the hours of operation, uh, or not? You know, maybe, maybe it's different enough from alcohol that you just say, each place can establish their own hours of operation, I, I don't know. Personal use, here's an issue that was kind of discussed with respect to odor, but this is, uh, more for safety, right? So if I have, I get to grow my six plants in my, my yard, well, do you wanna make a requirement that that has to be behind a fence, a locked fence, like a pool would have to be, or maybe even it should be required to be indoors with ventilation, so to prevent theft or to protect the community, you know, you got kids riding around on bikes and stuff, you got these giant 10-foot, I don't know, I mean, it's like, there's so much to think about, I'm not saying that hap, it will happen, I don't know if the, I don't even know if you could even grow the potency of type of plants in the natural environment and climate in Otero County, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert in it, but I think the, I think the really potent stuff, that the really commercialized, uh, high-powered stuff they grow indoors, 'cause you have to take care of them like, with humidities and certain, you know, it's, it's a real, um, in-depth process if you're really trying to get, grow the stuff that you, you'll see that'll be sold, like the special, all the different crazy names and flowers and stuff. Business registration, I know you have an ordinance in place already that businesses need to register with the county before they open, um, but you could address that again specifically for cannabis establishments, they would need to get a business license from the county. I mean, the good, if you think about it, there's taxation benefits, there's probably gonna be employment benefits, I mean, it just depends on how the market develops here in Otero County. Someone like, like, uh, down south, Son of Park, being on the board of Texas where it's not legalized, might have a greater interest in, in the commercial, you know, the commercialization, uh, or like Santa Fe and Bernito County with more populous people might have a, a different interest in how that market's gonna develop. You know, so those are like the big picture items, and I have a basic form of ordinance, but like, again, like I said, I'm, I wouldn't advocate for it, it would be, that's of course your, your decision, and you don't even have to do an ordinance at all if you wouldn't, don't want to, and to see, a wait-and-see approach, there are other counties that are taking the wait-and-see approach. With respect to the deadlines, like I said, the one risk is you get a license, you get a producer or a retailer who gets their license, uh, but you didn't have any regulation in place, then they may be grand, grandfathered into wherever they, wherever they set up, you know, so that's, that's why the, the, uh, timing issue is a bit concerning, and NMC has kind of, are formerly known as the Association of Counties, has really pushed, um, the counties to develop these ordinances, and we worked on ours, um, the big leader in the, in the drafting were the, the, Santa Fe County Attorney's Office, they did a significant amount of work and then kinda shared with everyone who maybe customized to their, to their own local jurisdictions. So, I mean, there is that kind of, that trend, but like I said, there are other counties who are taking a wait-and-see approach. I think that's about it, um, I might be happy to send you a draft of what I have, and you can take a look and consider, oh, moratorium, there's a lot of discussion about moratorium. A moratorium is where you locally do a resolution and you say, we are prohibiting any cannabis establishments or operations until we get our ordinance in place. So since you're saying we don't care about those application dates because we haven't had enough time and it's that important to public health and safety, that we're gonna suspend your ability to do any business here in this county. There's no law on it, of course, there's no case law, we just know the basics of moratorium, you can do one if it affects public health, welfare, if it's reasonably related to those issues. Some, some local jurisdictions are gonna try them because they don't have their ordinances ready. My personal feeling is that they'll, they will get challenged, you know, in court, which is always the wor, in my opinion, the worst road to go down if you're gonna, to litigate, 'cause it's too expensive and takes too long, even though I'm, I'm really good at it, you know? But, um, so moratorium option, but unknown, probably draw a legal challenge, might buy you more time if you care, but if you don't care, um, you know, if you don't want an ordinance at all, then, then wait and see. So that's the whole, that's the big picture, and I'm happy to help if I can, but I wanted to raise it, 'cause it's, we're on a new legal landscape, and I'm, I'm excited about it, 'cause it's new stuff for me to, to dig into, but it's, it, this is gonna happen, you know, it's, it's happening, so that's, that's my spiel on recreational cannabis.
Can you forward both of those to us?
I'm sorry?
Can you forward both of those to us?
I'll-
Your, your ordinances and then your deal on the, kinda like the postpone until we get an ordinance?
Oh, the moratorium, yep, I can send you-
We can look at that?
I sure can. Uh, I'll send you a, a form or a draft, yes, sir. And I think we, we've drafted up some opinions, I'd send you a letter that kinda lays it, lays it out, too. Be happy to.
So, I see, are, are you finished?
I'm finished, if you have any questions for me, please.
I see Rachel Black standing in the background, do you have something that-
You know, I'm just waiting for your minutes, I can talk to you for a second.
Oh, oh. You had trouble, man.
All right, at this, if there's no further deal, I'll make a motion for adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all right.